Okay, I have 6:30 if you do there.
Yes, webinar started.
Great. All right, I'm going to call to order the City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, April 12th, 2022 to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran. Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, would you have a quorum? Councilmember Lamb, would you lead the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Liam. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, the agenda is approved. Next, we'll have public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment accepted until 5:00 p.m. the day of meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@hachey@smamish.us and thecitycouncil@smamish.us. I will note for the public, if you are emailing the City Council, you are also emailing the city manager, the deputy city manager, the city attorney, and other city staff members. So if you want to email just the City Council, please email City Council members individually. Verbal public comment. Please join the Zoom meeting if you would like to give verbal public comment. Information on how to join is listed under Meeting Accessibility at the top of this agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if you wish to give comment. If you are joining by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you, and you will be given the ability to turn off the camera on if desired. You will be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute comment period. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to give public comment tonight. I currently see two hands raised, three hands. I will transfer them as the, in the order that they appear on the screen. Ramiro Valderrama.
Former Deputy Mayor Ramiro Valderrama. Here we go again with the latest episode of Malchow Gate, the long-running saga of alleged ethical violations and mishandling of confidential information by city manager and mayor, illegal actions against council members and against city-paid attorneys by Mayor Malchow and other council members. This week's episode can be titled Rearview Mirror, stemming from the quote made by Mayor Malchow in the Seattle Times on the 7. After voting to prevent council members from obtaining copies of the investigative report, Malchow, in her interview, attempts to sweep it all under the rug so the council can move forward and not look through the rearview mirror. Following prior week's episodes of Cover Ups, The Exit Payoffs, episodes on publicly cited ethics violations, mishandling of confidential information, putting the city potentially in legal jeopardy, and jeopardizing other actions against council members, nonresponsiveness to citizens' requests, and funded, and not returning over the city investigation for five months, I'm sorry, the city investigation of five months. This past week saw the continued embarrassment of our city in the Seattle Times and also on Cairo TV. In the latest and newest episode of Rearview Mirror, we see the response of Malchow to the Times. If we are looking in the rearview mirror constantly, how will we assist ourselves in filling that city manager void? And how can we possibly move forward with city business getting accomplished? Like a Hitchcock film, everyone is looking at the council and is suspecting that the continued attempts to block release of the investigative reports are attempts to cover up serious misdoings that go beyond those of the city manager and include current and past council members. What is so frightening in that report that would justify an attempt to prevent new council members from taking home copies to read? What is in the report that's so frightening that prevents you to releasing to the citizens who paid for it? While you may feel you can stonewall the citizens, do you really think that the Seattle Times and local TV stations are going to let this story go? The citizens are not stupid. Just as the lights exposing these misbehaviors and allegations shine brighter, Mayor Malchow and council members are trying to prevent citizens the ability to look into the rear mirror to see what really happened. With all the public serious allegations, similar investigations should now also be launched against Mayor Malchow and other council members who are being called out. The citizens have paid for this city manager investigation and have a right to know. What citizens are seeing now is scarier than the movie Rear Window. We need a council that is
15 seconds.
Malchow Gate and holding itself accountable and providing transparent democratic governance in our city. We should not be asked to settle for more. Obi Gallo.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, we have a secondary caller, you said?
Yes, we have three more callers.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Let's jump into the deep end of the pool. The number-one issue in Sammamish, all over social media, been a problem for 20 years. How we grow? What direction does our community grow? My comment today hangs together with the acronym 3QIQ from Article 5 of Enrich and Sustain. The show Star Wars had two famous four-character robots, R2-D2 and C3PO. Enrich and Sustain, which is one growth direction for the city, has another four-character acronym, 3QIQ, which helps bring the community together on which direction of growth is best for our community. Make three assumptions, answer fundamental questions, get information, and then ask the questions again. What are the three assumptions to make? Roads within Sammamish can handle any growth we as a community choose. Two, the school districts serving Sammamish can handle any growth we choose to allow. And three, there are no growth targets from the GMA or the region or the state. We can do anything we want. All that's not true, but if it were true, here's the questions. How would you change housing supplies in Sammamish based on those three assumptions if they were true? How many more large, single-family homes would we allow in our community? How many more different, diverse, and smaller multifamily homes, ownership and rental, would we allow in centers now and in the future? To answer that question, we need "I," which is information. We don't have knowledge from the CHU and single-family build-out, which I've discussed many times before, and I'm not going to repeat here. Housing needs and wants, what's our capacity, and what's enlightened public opinion on over 40 consequence topics that are radically different depending on which growth direction we choose. With that information in hand, ask the three questions again. What's the right mix of different types of housing under these assumptions? I assert that it's critical to really understand the comprehensive plan, the BLOOMA EIS, and enrich and sustain. And then it's important to look through and fill in all the numbers of what did King County do before we incorporated? What's happened for 17 years under the current comp plan? What's happened the last four years, and what could happen? I sent a page today on this.
15 seconds.
The most important thing for Sammamish to do is to determine what growth directions our community decides to sustainably embark on from here on and to what degree. We need information. We need informed opinions and emotions after being informed. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'll now promote the next attendee. John? Hello, John? Can you hear? You're muted.
I think we're okay now. Thank you. Is there a way that I can go last?
There's one more person.
Yeah, I'd like to go last, if that's okay.
Okay, I will, I'll demote you, and then I'll promote the next caller.
Yeah, it's John James. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Mary Victor.
Hi, I'm Mary Victor. Been in Sammamish over two decades. I wanted to speak tonight to your Agenda Item 5, which is the Lewis Thompson Road. You're looking at putting at least the prices with it. I did want to say a few things. We'd had it as a study session. People had talked about putting a barrier between a bike lane and the road because that way it'd be safer for bikes. I think adding a barrier to the road would actually make it less safe because there are a lot of bikes riding down that particularly like to share the road with the car lane. Sometimes there's debris on the edge, and you need to be able to move off. I see in the new packet, it talks about adding rumble strips. We're not having a problem with drivers going to sleep on Lewis Thompson. What they're doing is they're going too fast, and they're not staying in their lane. And I did look at a 14-minute video on rumble strips, and even though you can put them in after a project is done, I say that rumble strips hold water. I've seen that in Montana where I grew up. They can also hold debris, and then just because they'll break up a little bit, they'll add more rocks to the surface, and a rock under a bike tire can be a really unsafe thing. And then in about 12 of the 14 minutes on the video I watched, it talked about how they really add to the sound. And we already have a lot of people who signed the petition for the sidewalk for Lewis Thompson that they say at their house, they can hear big vehicles coming down too fast, they can hear screeching brakes, they can hear the compression brakes that aren't even supposed to get used, so we don't need to add more things. And this is in an area that flows right to Zakuus Creek, so it's really close to where the salmon are that we're trying to preserve. The other thing I didn't, I didn't have time to write it up or do the photos for it, is I went to the Inglewood Hill sidewalk project, and I took my tape measure, and I measured sidewalks look like they're always six feet. And then the little curb, that's about six inches, and it's an almost vertical curb because you want people to use it like a drunk bumper if they run into it. The bike lane is usually four to five feet, in some places it's six feet. And then there's the fog line. That's the white line that people aren't supposed to drive over. Each lane going up and down on both Lewis Thompson and on Inglewood Hill is nine feet, four inches if you measure to the inside of the pavement for those. So I don't think we should make it narrow because you do have a lot of trucks with trailers that go, and they just aren't going to be able to fit in a narrow lane. The double-yellow line that you're not supposed to cross that people do, and there are public services guy who drives by my house said one of those did get hit in the last 30 days because someone decided they just couldn't wait, and they had to, they had to pass on the double-yellow line. We shouldn't be doing that. That's 12 inches. So I've given you the measurements of the road. I'll draw it up and do it in a picture so you'll understand. But we do need to do the project. It can't be a Ferrari, but it also needs to know that there's steep slopes, landslide hazard area, and it's quite curvy. So we can't use the standard, Public Works standards.
15 seconds.
It is supposed to give exceptions and things that you can do in a steep slope, curvy area. So I hope that you'll listen to some of those. I did my public comment in the last study session, and I'm speaking tonight, and I'm looking forward to see what staff presents. And I want to just let you know, I think staff is really excellent for the city, so please support them.
Thank you.
I will now promote Mr. James. Mr. James?
Yes, I'm here.
You can, it's your turn.
Yes. Do you have a conversation tonight about the panel for who's going to serve on the next council? Will that happen tonight? Because I don't know if somebody can answer that question because I didn't see it on the, the agenda.
That's right, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Well, will it be voted before it goes in the county, then?
Mr. James, I'm sorry, we don't typically have a back-and-forth during public comment, so.
I, I, I watched most of the last session, but I've done a lot of them over the years. But John James, 21603 Northeast 24th Street, Sammamish, I live in Sahale. Used to be a council member, also been a deputy mayor a few years ago. And I thought if you're having conversation tonight, I would make a comment as it gets ready to go, turned over to the county. My only comment is whoever is appointed, whether from the council and/or from the county, that that person should just sure finish out the term. And that any of those 18 people that throw their hat in the ring, it becomes an open seat again. So if that was worth considering, I just would throw it out. Any of those candidates probably could identify themselves as just willing to finish out the, the term. But that's my one and only suggestion, and that's my comment.
Thank you.
Yes. Have fun tonight.
Thank you.
Just old times. All right. Good night.
Madam City Clerk, can you just confirm that that concludes everyone wishing to give public comment this evening?
Yes, there are no, no further commenters.
Wonderful, thank you. So next on our agenda, we do have an executive session. This is for pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1i, property acquisition pursuant to 42.30.1b, and to evaluate candidates for elected office pursuant to RCW 42.30.1h. Madam City Attorney, I'm not really sure about timeframes for the first two items.
I defer to Public Works Director Jeff Elikis on timing. Mr. Elikis, do you have a expected duration? I'm not sure if he's going to weigh in, but we could just say.
Okay.
Oh, here he comes. Great.
All right, take some minute or two. Jeff Elikis, Public Works Director. I'm guessing 20 minutes to start on the property issue?
Okay, so council, why don't we say 30 minutes total? I do anticipate action, so 30 minutes? Okay, we'll see you on that other link. Okay. Okay, so we have everyone back? I mean, we've got everyone here. Counsel, if there are any motions? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I'm good now. Okay. Yeah, I do. It's in here. One second. Sorry. All right. I move to approve a settlement agreement between the city and Cougar Financial Corporation consistent with terms recommended by outside counsel.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, the motion passes. Are there any other motions before we move on? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there is no consent calendar for tonight. This was originally a study session that we had to convert to a special meeting.
Thank you. We will move on then to new business. Our first item is the appointment of two members to the Sammamish Cleaning Commission. Deputy Mayor Clark, sorry.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm doing new business, if you can hear me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I move to open up the two vacancies up for applications instead of considering the, I don't know, seven or so that were on our agenda. I'd like to open it up.
I second. It's been moved and seconded. Deputy Mayor Clark, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just looking at kind of the process of everything and the fact that, you know, this happened, I don't know, three or four months ago. There could be new applicants ready and available, maybe that are now paying attention or now kind of tuned in. So I'd really like to open it up, you know, say for a week or so, depending on how that is for staff. As long as that works with the Planning Commission, I think David Pyle, hopefully somebody talked to him as well. So as long as it's okay with staff, I'd really like to open it up.
Mr. Acting City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, in response to the deputy mayor, we have talked about it as staff. We are, we're ready to, to go with the process that you all come up with. I believe the city clerk has a proposed timeline and process if you all would like to consider what she has. If not, you can set your own, and that's totally fine, too. Thank you.
Mr. Acting City Manager, does she have something that she can put up on the screen for us?
Yes.
That would be great. Maybe she could just put that up while we're going through hands. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Moran, did you have?
Yeah, I'll wait to see what Lita's got.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Can everybody see this?
Zooming in.
I've got a few dates in here that are to be determined. I thought that council determine how you'd like to, when you'd like to close it. And then if you, we suggested having a special meeting, and then we need to determine a date for that, for the interviews.
Perfect, thank you. I know I'm certainly okay with this. I just want to be sure that, that this gels with staff's needs as it pertains to the work that the Planning Commission will be doing relative to the comprehensive. Sorry, I have my microphone on. Mr. Acting City Manager, can you just simply confirm that this timeline will still work with the Planning Commission and the needs that staff has as it relates to the comprehensive plan work?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we, as I said before, I've spoken with staff, and, and we are, we will make it work. I think it will just, whoever gets appointed, their, their lead-in time will be a little bit shorter, but I think we can make that work. And really, as long as we get them seated before we dive fully into the process, I think that's the, the main point.
Perfect. So I don't see any more hands up. But Councilmember Moran, you had a hand up previously. Did you still have a comment, or you're good?
I don't have a problem with having it open for a week. I don't have a problem with that.
Perfect. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to open this up for a week and presumably follow that timeline. Deputy Mayor Clark, I don't know if you are amenable to that timeline that was set up there by staff?
Yeah, that looks great. Thank you, Lita.
Perfect. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, the ayes have it, so we will use that timeline. Mr. Acting City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick follow-up. I just, I did want to note on here that the special meeting is, we will try to work with your calendars to get something on the calendar. We recognize that in order to allow you the amount of time you need to do interviews, we can't fit that in in our normal business meetings, given our agendas. So we will be looking for a date separate from a regular meeting date to try to hold that meeting so you have concentrated time to be able to go through that process. I just wanted that to be clear.
Thank you so much. Okay, council, we're going to move to our next item, which is a presentation. This is the Emergency Management Elected Official Orientation. Mr. Acting City Manager, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Lita will be bringing up to panelist Andrew Stevens, who is the city's contracted emergency manager, and I'm going to turn the meeting and the presentation over to him.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager. Good evening, councilmembers of Sammamish. My name is Andrew Stevens. I'm the emergency manager for Eastside Fire and Rescue. I do apologize if we have some background noise tonight. It's late in the offices, and our janitorial staff are outside cleaning, so might have some vacuuming noise. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let me know when you see that.
We can see it.
Add it.
Perfect. So the intent of this meeting is not to provide a entire overview of everything that emergency management does, getting down into the weeds, getting down to the strategies and the tactics, but really is to provide especially the new council members insight into emergency management and what it does for the city, what some of the city's responsibilities are, but more specifically, what the role of elected officials are versus staff in that process. So a few years ago, when the city was conducting strategic plans and plan review, we looked at the mission of what emergency management was and came up with this mission statement. And that is to create the highest possible state of emergency readiness and to be prepared to react promptly to save lives and property when they're threatened or affected by emergency or disaster. As a result, our community will be resilient, adaptive, and confident in its abilities when challenged by known and emergent threats to public safety. Now, the first things we want to talk about, I guess, when it comes down to what emergency management is, especially how it pertains to governments, is understanding some of the basic laws and policies of emergency management and why we do what we do. Here are some of the key components, both at a federal, state, and local level that we've all signed off on as a jurisdiction, that the city of Sammamish has basically agreed upon. And that's what sets kind of our baseline standard for what practices we need to do when it comes to emergency and disaster preparedness. First and foremost, we like to look at the Homeland Security Presidential Directive 5, which really is the foundation document of establishing a national incident management system, or NIMS. This was a post-9/11 concept where they realized that governments across the United States were more vulnerable because they were not utilizing the same tools and the same process for managing large, complex incidents. The city of Sammamish and all local governments, and actually all levels of every government, are required to adopt and follow NIMS as a kind of a core doctrine. Otherwise, they are not eligible for any sort of preparedness or emergency funding, pre or post-disaster. That ties into grant fundings and so forth. Same with the Stafford Act, which requires, and the subsequent amendment to that, the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, that requires jurisdictions to look in at their hazards, to understand that requires jurisdictions to look in at their hazards, to understand them and find ways to mitigate those risks. And we'll talk about disaster mitigation further into this slideshow. But um, just to put it simply, up until two years ago, city of Sammamish was not in compliance with that requirement. They did had not in its twenty years of incorporation, had ever conducted a hazard mitigation plan and adopted that. Back in two thousand twenty, uh, the city council did. So that is a plus. Same thing with adopting NIMS, I believe, about five years ago, six years ago, is when the city first realized that these were shortcomings. They did not have an emergency management program and moved to act on that through adoption and starting to build that program. More locally, Washington has RCWs specifically pertaining to some of the requirements of emergency management for local governments. And that can be found in the RCW, uh, chapter thirty eight. And that specifies things such as like our comprehensive emergency management plan, some of the outlines, the responsibilities, and the authorities that local governments have in a crisis. And we've all committed to following those rules as well through our own Sammamish chapter two point seven zero. That's a city municipal code that outlines what we do as a as a city. We've uh, especially pertaining to the authorities of the city manager in a disaster as well as council and some of the other steps that we do, um, as far as adopting NIMS and ICS. Now, I will have a time, just so you know, I will have time for questions following this, so I'll try to move through this as we go. Um, if it's something very pertinent, you can ask, but what I prefer is to hold questions till the end, just to make it simple. So when we talk about disasters, um, when we talk about emergency management, um, those are the big events. You know, they are not the simple, you know, while a house fire or a multi-car vehicle accident is a emergency and a disaster, obviously for those involved. It does not normally extend beyond numerous days. It does not, you know, um, go through resources. My definition of a disaster, uh, simply put, is having more problems than you have resources to deal with. They can occur with no notice, especially earthquakes and other hazards, uh, some sort of man-made technical disaster, pipeline disaster, or very limited notice. But what we are seeing is a higher frequency and higher likelihood, especially around climate-driven disasters. Now, you know, my notice, second bullet here does not say may overwhelm local capabilities. It will overwhelm local capabilities when we have a disaster. We will have to triage those problems. We will have to deal with the greatest priorities of life safety, followed then by pop property protection and environmental and eventually kind of society economic restoration as we move through these operations. But we will be overwhelmed. We will have to go through using the principles of NIMS through our county partners and regional partners, possibly states and even federal partners, to be able to get the residents of Sammamish and businesses of Sammamish the aid that they need. We saw this in COVID with resources coming down from the county through public health, from the state public health agencies, all the way through the federal government, which is basically funding and replenishing city coffers in a disaster. Lives, businesses, um, with normal day-to-day activities will be severely disrupted in a large-scale emergency. And again, they are becoming far more frequent and far more costly. If you look at the scale and the scope of frequent disasters over the past twenty years, the magnitude of multi-billion dollar disasters is ever, ever increasing. You see this in large-scale wildfires, huge hurricanes battering the East Coast, and eventually some of the big catastrophic disasters that faced Washington, like the Cascadia earthquake. So to do this, one of the first steps we look at is understanding our risk as a jurisdiction. Um, and that includes a variety of different metrics. We want to understand the types of hazards that threaten Sammamish. And a lot of people are transplants into this community. They're even transplants in from other states, other countries. So we look at, you know, exposing them and educating them in the types of hazards we have here. We have natural hazards. We have human-caused hazards. We've been through cyber attacks. In Sammamish as a jurisdiction, you can have technological failures or intentional adversarial type attacks. We also combine that with the likelihood of those hazards. You know, it could be the worst-case scenario, like the Cascadia earthquake. But the likelihood of that happening is about once every, you know, three or four hundred years. Now, we're overdue at this time, so we want to prepare. And it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. But we can know, you know, the likelihood of a asteroid hitting Sammamish is fairly low, so we probably don't plan exactly for that contingency. Um, and then lastly, we look at the consequences and the impacts of that crisis. Is it going to affect our populations? Do the demographics of our population, are they more conducive or more resilient from certain hazards versus others? Um, and we look at how our our populations are going to react to certain events. Those all play into the overall risk equation, and then we look at our capabilities and what we're able to do and try to plan for those gaps. Now, when it comes to emergency management, um, it's a cyclic, you know, a phased approach. We have four major phases of what we deal with, you know, where we're dealing with blue sky, nothing is happening versus our gray sky events when we're in that response phase. So you're always preparing, you're, you know, and it leads into that response phase, and we'll go into this in more detail during that kind of critical window, that response window of life safety, property protection is usually no more than, you know, a few days max, seventy-two hours. And then transitioning into that short and long-term recovery, economic recovery, getting things back to normal, getting children back to school, businesses stood up. And I gave this, you know, similar presentation to this two years ago when COVID was first kicking off. And to go back and look at that and understand that we've been dealing with a crisis for two years now is unbelievable. And it kind of goes into, I guess, the understanding that you can have multiple disasters at the same time. These are not single events. We are hit with a pandemic at the same time. We are hitting possible, you know, record-breaking inflation, so economic disasters. You could, you know, so that doubly impacts individuals. Now you add a heat dome or a severe weather or even an earthquake on top of that. You have to understand that disasters don't operate in silos, and we need to kind of factor that into our equation because how we operate, how we respond in the peak of a pandemic, when we were doing it virtually, definitely differs than how we would do it possibly in a, you know, before COVID, pre-COVID situation, where we could meet face-to-face without risk. But the first step really of emergency preparedness or emergency management is this phase of preparedness. And this is, this is most commonly seen is because we have more blue sky days than we do have critical disasters, right? It's we take the time to plan, to write emergency plans, to work with stakeholders and partners within the community, to do outreach and to educate them on risk, and not only risk, but how they should respond. Uh, we conduct training, whether it's through our community emergency response team or our ACERT volunteers. We exercise our plans. Um, and a great example of preparedness is the recently purchased earthquake simulator that council approved probably a month ago. This is going to be an amazing tool to get out there and educate and provide insights to our residents, to our schoolchildren, to businesses and service clubs on on the threat of earthquake and what that really looks like, because, you know, it is an amazing opportunity for them to actually visualize and feel something that most people have never gone through. Most people have not seen an earthquake. Uh, we've developed Sammamish-specific preparedness guides and neighborhood guides because we realize, again, that we are not going to be able to provide assistance to everyone in the immediate aftermath of a disaster. It is a, it is just an impossible situation. It does not matter how well-prepared a jurisdiction is. It is beyond the capabilities of any jurisdiction, beyond New York City or LA, where you might have twenty, you know, thousand police and fire officers, right? At any given time, we might have three squad cars and, you know, three engines, nine firefighters in the jurisdiction at the given moment. So we have to prepare our residents through individual household and family readiness. It begins at that individual, having them be prepared with their own supplies and kits and resources to be able to manage themselves. And that's one of the reasons why our CERT program has been so successful for more than a decade now. It's a grassroots program that teaches people how to respond and care for themselves and their neighbors. Now, we've held preparedness fairs. Now, obviously, COVID has put a damper on some of these things, but I think pre, you know, during COVID, we did so much community outreach on the threats of COVID and how to protect themselves from COVID as well. So none of this preparedness activity stopped. We just had to shift to the current threat. Um, we were still conducting volunteer training on the side as well. And we were still exercising, you know, especially our continuity of operations and continuity of government plans throughout this incident. Council, your role in preparedness is not getting down into the tactical weeds, but it is to familiarize yourself with those federal and state and local laws and policies that we mentioned previously, because as a, basically, it's a requirement for the jur- for the jurisdiction to comply with those laws and to comply with the RCWs and even your own local ordinances that you've adopted. It'd be great to have councils' involvement in emergency planning processes, whether it's approval of plans or support of those initiatives, supporting the program through budget and to be able to grow that, to be able to fund resources or personnel or equipment uh, when it is presented to the council, and to also help with that community outreach. You know, I think a lot of the times, you know, council members, especially elected officials, are looked upon as spokespeople for the community. So if they're modeling preparedness and they are out there selling, not selling, but really just, you know, uh, I guess amplifying the voice of staff and emergency management professionals across the nation on what is, why it is important and working with partners and working with other, you know, your other elected officials across the region. That is a great tool and it's a great step on what you can do as a councilman. Now, hazard mitigation is the next phase in emergency management. Now, this can come before a disaster, but can also come part in that recovery process. As you're rebuilding, you're trying to rebuild stronger. Mitigation is not eliminating the threat. It's reducing the consequences, right? It is, a good example of this would be a Firewise program that, you know, Eastside Fire is starting soon for all of our partners, is to bring in specialists and mitigation planners that look at risk and they look at ways that we can reduce that threat. Because it is extremely valuable, right? Every, you know, it says it right here, every one dollar spent in mitigation will save you six dollars in recovery. It, it, you know, you are building a resilient community. It allows your community to bounce back stronger. You're not going to be able to stop severe weather from happening. You're not going to be able to stop earthquakes from happening. The things we've done over time is, you know, we've adopted stronger building codes. We've adopted, you know, we've widened lanes or we've made, uh, improvements to critical infrastructure that make it so they're not going to fail. We've reduced interdependencies. That's all hazard mitigation. Now, how council can help with that is you are the policymakers. You can develop or enhance building codes, um, or other policies that will strengthen community resilience. You can look at those single points of failure and you can work with strategic partners, such as your water districts or schools, to strengthen them as well. Again, the hazard mitigation plan is a document that city councils approve. You've adopted this document, or you adopted the Sammamish Annex to the King County Regional Plan, not even two years ago. And it spells out some of the strategic goals and objectives that the city wants to do in the short term, you know, in the medium term, five-year term, and the long term. And five years or three years from now, we're going to go through that exact same process again, and they're going to want to see where we've gone. And we want to, you know, be able to push projects, identify funding for mitigation strategies, and, you know, make sure that we are actually doing something to reduce our risk. Um, and lastly, you know, there's a lot of city plans out there. Um, I think ensuring that we include sometimes a hazard element or at least a hazard lens through our other cities, uh, city plans, like the comp plan or urban forest growth plan or even transportation master plan. It's great to have all these, you know, documents out there that kind of spell the strategic vision for the community. But we want to make sure it's safe and we want to make sure it's resilient. You know, when people think emergency management, this is usually the part they think about, you know, the lights and sirens and the response and the emergency operations center. It is a very small component of what we do. But the response phase of our disaster is that most critical and is why we prepare beforehand because it shaves minutes, days, weeks, possibly months off our recovery. It saves lives. It protects our property. It protects our environment. And when we do community surveys in Sammamish, these are all obviously things that our residents are very passionate about, is our quality of life. So being able to respond quickly to ensure that and to be able to get people back on that step to recovery is, you know, the key aspect of response. That is spelled out through our comprehensive emergency management plan, which was adopted by the state and was submitted and approved by the state back in two thousand seventeen. We are undergoing continual revisions and, you know, additions to that plan. And we're due for a next formal state review of the city's comprehensive emergency plan back in two thousand twenty-three. We also have our emergency operations center where we key staff, um, from various agencies report in, whether it's virtually or, you know, in person to coordinate, to help identify incident objectives and to be able to help paint that broad instant, you know, operational picture, which helps incident commanders on the ground, which helps police and fire and public works and those conducting shelter operations, running field operations. This is kind of the hub. Uh, it's kind of the Houston to the astronauts, so to speak. So one of the things we're constantly doing is looking at ways to make our emergency operations center or our incident command system and incident management system more effective. Uh, we recently in January published a new EOC manual, distributed that out to key staff. We're working on refilling positions from vacant staff or, you know, incoming or new staff in the city and undergoing a constant state of training. Staff, for example, are conducting ICS courses regularly upon their hire. Um, we're going to be meeting and leading up to more of a tabletop exercise come Castadia in June for Cascadia Rising, as well as some sheltering exercises to practice some of those functional capabilities. So in response, what do elected officials do? I can tell you what you don't, first of all. You don't care about tactics, right? You don't care about incident strategies. Um, an incident commander, for the most part, or an EOC manager, does not care about tactics. You leave that to the field professionals, right? But elected policymakers, one of your key things that you need to do in a crisis is the approval of emergency proclamations. When the city manager, acting city manager, or interim city manager, anyone else who's been delegated that responsibility activates or declares an emergency, that comes with certain authorities. And it's really the elected official's key responsibility in a, in a crisis to approve that and to allow it to continue, to allow those authorities, right? You will provide that overall policy direction and authority as the authority having jurisdiction, right? You'll be briefed. You'll be in constant coordination with the city manager on, you know, key incident objectives. You'll be maintaining situational awareness of the incident, but you don't hold a seat in our EOC. You're in the city's EOC. You really would just be briefed as a policy group, um, leading some of those policy-level decisions. One of the most important things I would like to reiterate is the consistency of one voice messaging in a crisis. The city will be putting out direct and very, hopefully, you know, specific communications on what they need residents to do. And sometimes that might differ from the normal situation. So So working with our PIOs, with our comm staff in Sammamish to again amplify that message. Good example could be a, a snow, snowmageddon, right? We have several days of snow. Individuals are frustrated that their, you know, street hasn't been plowed yet and the city is constantly pushing out messaging regarding the snow prioritization routes and why they have to stay on certain key arterials to ensure life safety and emergency transportation routes. That's the same message that then elected officials need to reproduce. They need to put out. They don't need to say, well, um, your cul-de-sac isn't plowed out. Call the city manager and or call the public works director and they'll see if they can send a truck out there. We, you know, so we have a process. We have the tactics. It's really up to elected officials to mirror that and at least, um, be comfortable in understanding what the city's response is. So they can be that message. They can be that voice. Um, and then lastly, you know, in a response, it's great to serve as liaisons with other external agencies, possibly external higher forms of government. You know, if we need to put pressure on other elected officials at the county level or at the state level or working within some of our congressional reps, you're the ones who do that. You do that through committees. You do that through sound cities. Um, and it, it helps, right? You have that political, you know, pressure to sometimes get more resources or to help share resources across the, the area. Now, recovery, last phase of emergency management, right, is it can be years, right? I mean, we're in two years of response. Um, but it varies. It includes short and intermediate and long-term objectives, right? Recovery could be that rebuilding phase. It could, it focuses on economic restoration. It focuses on trying to return individuals back to a sense of normalcy or even stronger, right? Recovery needs to be done in an equitable and fair manner, right? Focusing on, because again, the people who are affected most in crisis are those most vulnerable, right? Already in the pre-disaster phase. So we want to not only help them, but ensure that our response and recovery plans focus on that equitable distribution of assistance. Um, and we wanted to reduce risk again to a level that it was prior to the disaster. I'd like to again, come back from this thing more resilient. Um, because we know that disasters are cyclic. They're going to happen again. And if we haven't learned from our mistakes, then, you know, we're not doing our, our job properly. Council's role in recovery, right? You can meet with impacted residents. You know, we see this, um, you know, reassuring and again, supporting staff through this phase, but hearing, uh, voices, participating in recovery town halls, um, is all critically important. It's all things that happen in big disasters. Um, during that recovery phase, you are the controllers of the purse strings. You're controllers of the future policy, right? So you can consider mitigation projects that would, during the rebuilding phase, that could lessen or prevent those future losses from reoccurring again. If Sahaly Way, you know, slides down into Evans Creek, Creek Preserve in, because of a critical lands or a crucial landslide and we need to rebuild it, maybe we rebuild it stronger and, you know, wider so it facilitates evacuations in the future, right? There's always ways to look at strengthening that mitigation. Um, you continue to provide information through your constituent networks, amplifying the voice of the city, um, understanding the type of disaster assistance available to community and residents. We saw that, you know, with COVID, obviously different money, different opportunities to fund human service organizations, to provide grants to businesses and also participating with your city managers and other elected officials or counties and after action reviews and policy level decisions to try to make it better in the future. You know, and I want to touch on community resiliency because it's not a term heard very often. Again, a lot of this is focused around emergency preparedness. That's what people hear. That's what they get. But this is another crucial component of where elected officials can drastically affect the outcome of a crisis and that is through community resiliency. And what that is, is it truly bridges that gap between traditional preparedness of just a, you know, this is a ready individual. They have plans. They're prepared and so forth. And also the overall pre-stated disaster of your community, that community well-being, right? I think we saw this very much so with the COVID response. Early on, it became very clear that the support networks and, you know, the, the individual resiliency of our community members were able to withstand COVID. Were able to follow those pre, you know, non-pharmaceutical mitigations better. They were in a better standing economically and even, you know, with job security to work remotely. Um, our businesses, same situation, right? But community well-being as a whole includes, this is some of those factors that makes Sammamish one of those popular places to live that are constantly voted on, right? Why Sammamish is great. It's a livability. It's wellness program. It's the overall health. It's the overall, you know, social economic stability, family groups, volunteer agencies, church groups, all of these things that are, make a community strong before a disaster, help it in the recovery process, because these individual groups come together. They support their neighbors. They go check on their neighbors. They support the businesses. They start, you know, crowdsourcing funds or, you know, doing whatever they can to help those that need aid, because again, it takes a community. Government's not going to be able to solve all the problems. So if there's wellness programs or if there's programs that the city or the council are already focusing on that increase equity, that increase livability, that increase, you know, security and all of these, you know, healthy and public health campaigns within our residents, that's going to strengthen community resiliency, okay? And then with that, I'm, I guess I'm under time, so I have some time for questions. I will stop sharing.
Andrew for that presentation. I think, um, and I, I will look at other hands here. But one thing I think I was, um, I think that I'm hopeful that we can get in the future. I appreciate kind of the 30,000 foot level view of, um, council's role in this. But I, I think that I'm, I'm hoping to, um, learn or have our community also learn. It is, if minutes from now, we have a devastating earthquake that shuts off the internet and the gas and electricity, I as a councilor, I don't know what I'm doing. Like, I don't know where to go. I don't know what to do. And I'm not saying because I'm a council member, I should do something different. But I guarantee you, if, if I don't know and I, you know, some of my fellow council members, we've had this conversation. They don't know what to do either, but maybe our community also doesn't know what to do. And I think that information while cannot just be dished out one time, it's got to be a thing that we push out consistently as a city. So, um, you can't lead a, a horse to water and make it drink, right? You've got to keep forcing the information, because in a, in a true emergency, well, we can push out this preparedness stuff, like we're prepared from the standpoint of, you know, having enough food and, and water, um, you know, in our own personal residence. But does everybody have that information? And, and that singular touch point is just simply not enough. Um, it, it needs to be repetitive information. I think emergency preparedness, especially given where we live. But there's this very escalating circumstance that I think is a, a likely reality from where we live. Um, you know, I think that's part of why we participate in Cascadia Rising is that there is the reality that we could have a devastating earthquake. And I'm not sure, I know we have our CERT program and that's great, but if, if our, you know, just everyday residents are not informed on what do I do? My gas, my electricity shut off. I can't call anybody. There's a tree down. Whatever it is, I can't even leave my house. What do I do? I want to put that information in our residents' hands so that we are not panicking in the event of something devastating like that. How do we do that? I mean, I'm sure that's a concerted effort between Eastside Fire and Rescue and, you know, communication departments, not just for Sammamish, but, you know, all of the jurisdictions that, that EFR touched. So how do we?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mayor. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's no shortage of information out there in today's world. It's really if, you know, it was no different again with COVID, right? Like if we had, I could come here every week and give the presentation on COVID on, talk about the statistics of Sammamish and all of those are also publicly available through King County's dashboard. And one thing the city has done is we have created, we're not just mirroring or amplifying what FEMA says, right? Because it doesn't always work for Sammamish. So we've created Sammamish-specific outreach materials and those are on the websites. Those are plastered, you know, how do I prepare for emergency? Is one of the front and center things on the Sammamish website. And it's something that we've done very regularly and we do outreach events. We do go speak with groups. Um, there's been several, even during COVID, virtual town halls where both myself and the chief of police, city managers will take questions and field information about that. Um, we do work. It's not really just a one-touch. Um, you know, this is not the presentation to the residents on how to prepare. It was really, okay, elected officials, this is not, this isn't even how to prepare your home, right? Or your family on what to do. This is kind of, okay, broad, like you said, the, the 10,000 foot view on your role, you know? And it cries, and again, that's familiarizing yourself with the laws and the policies. And there is training out there that is free. Um, if you want me to deliver a three-day workshop to all the elected officials, I can do that as a state and federally recognized trainer. However, FEMA at the same time has courses that are free of charge. They will even pay for the transportation to send you out to Emmitsburg, Maryland to the, you know, the fire training center to learn more about executives' role in disaster or focus on ICS. But again, you don't really need to worry about ICS, because as a policy level decision maker, you're not down in those weeds. Um, but there is a lot of information out there and we'll continue. You see, a lot of times we'll push out information on the city's newsletters, through their e-blogs as well, especially come winter storm season, we're on wildfires. Um, there's going to be a big push around the shakeout and, you know, earthquake preparedness as well. And we work with other partners to do that as well. Uh, kids in schools practice earthquake drills. We work with Lake Washington Isakaw School District to ensure that disaster preparedness is a part of their curriculum. Um, so there's a lot of things out there and I think the one, the good news is, you know, Sammamish residents by and large probably have the resources to do that, right? To prepare, to actually build a kit. That's one of the reasons why some of the FEMA build a kit, be, you know, be prepared, have a plan, have been largely unsuccessful in some areas, because it's hard to tell someone to stock up seven, you know, a week's worth of supplies, or in our case, two weeks' worth of supplies when they can't afford the next meal, right? So again, that comes back to some of those community wellness programs. If we have a strong community prior to the disaster, which we do, for the most part, it, it, it builds that resiliency.
Continuing to push out information. I know there's that great packet that's got a brown cover on it that, you know, residents could print out, but if we can, you know, point residents on a regular basis to, to that. I think a lot of people are just so information overwhelmed from so many different channels that things like emergency management can be like, well, that can wait till tomorrow until it can't. Um, and so I think if we can just make a concerted effort, you know, I think it should be in every newsletter, frankly, that, hey, go download this packet, know where you're meeting your family in the event that you get separated. Um, you know, do you have this food? Do you have a mechanism for getting clean drinking water? Um, just something, because I think the more often we hit them up, I think the more prepared a community with, will be. And for me, that feels like, you know, a, a policy setting and, um, a council member role in emergency preparedness is making sure that our constituents are prepared. So thank you.
A hundred percent agree. And that's one of the reasons why I said be an amplifier of this message, you know? So when the snow starts hitting, um, or the, you know, we start getting smoke in there even now, I know probably each of the council members I'm speaking to tonight have large social media, media followers or, you know, your own platforms to communicate this. Share those resources. Share the city resources that are out there. So again, it's, it's not just this coming from the city. It's also coming from you.
Great. Got a couple more hands up for you. Councilmember Lamb.
Hey, Andrew.
Hi.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I have more comments, I guess. Um, I was just looking at that emergency preparedness guide that, uh, Mayor, Mayor was talking about. And I didn't see, for example, in the wildfire section, what I'm supposed to do in case of wildfire. And I'm speaking not only as a council member, but also as a resident. Like I would want to know which roads are open. If we have 10 minutes to get out, I don't know how to get out. Is 228th open? Do I just go down Snake Hill, which is where I live? Will there be somebody guiding traffic? Will traffic only go in one direction out? It is not in the emergency preparedness guide. We are three months out from potentially another really hot summer. Do the vulnerable residents in Sammamish know where they can turn to? I know that last summer it was a bit of a scramble, so I don't see plans. Um, so I understand we are looking at this from a very high level, but I don't see specifics and as a resident and as a council person, I think, um, people do want to see those specifics. Um, so I would disagree with you when you say that as a council person, I am not supposed to be, I'm not supposed to care about tactics and strategies. Well, I do care about tactics and I do care about strategies. And I do believe that this people in Sammamish care about the strategies and how they're supposed to get out and how they're supposed to stay safe in the event of another, you know, heat wave or an earthquake.
No, that's the amazing point. Um, here's where, you know, this is where I disagree, because there's no way I could put an evacuation route in a plan for a wildfire, because I don't know where that wildfire is starting. I don't know until the incident happens, what roads are open. It's the same reason why we don't publish sheltering data. I got 10 options for where I can publicly shelter people in an emergency. I don't know if that building is going to be standing when the disaster happens. We have to conduct that immediate risk analysis and capabilities when the disaster happens. Now, it is important to plan for these events and that's exactly why in next week, you'll see an item on the consent calendar, um, for an evacuation time estimate study that we are trying to do for the city of Sammamish, where it's going to look at transportation infrastructure. It's going to look at time. How, what is the estimate on, based on houses within neighborhoods? How long realistically is it going to take them to leave? And then we're going to play with those assumptions. What if 228th and Sahaly Way to the north are closed? And, you know, and we have to move everyone out to the south. But we don't have geographical risks like a tsunami, where we can just post signs and say, go uphill. So that's why you don't see that detail of information within a preparedness document. It's going to talk about how to mitigate your own personal risk in wildfires. It's going to talk about having those emergency plans already. If you know how to get off the plateau one way without using Google Maps, learn three ways, for example, right? But I cannot tell someone, you live here, go this way, because that road might be closed. I might be sending them directly into a fire.
So, you know, that's really helpful information. I think that's information that all our residents should know. So, you know, that should, again, as the mayor said, that should be, you know, reinforced and along with other emergency information.
Yeah, I will.
Newsletter or website.
I'll definitely work with our comms folks to amplify that message or I'll ask the acting city manager to. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And, and, um, yeah, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Lamb from the standpoint that, yeah, it's really hard. Um, and, and one of the biggest problems I had when the TMP came out was that we did not and it did not address in any way, um, how we handle a emergency. It didn't have emergency routes for exit on, um, involved in the TMP at all. And I think it has to be there. It has to be part of, um, it has to be part of the plan. It has to have emergency routes in there somehow. Um, and to not have it, to be part of the TMP is, is a huge mistake as far as I can see. But I can't also expect that in a fire, you're going to know where it's But I can't also expect that in a fire, you're going to know where it's coming from and which way the winds are blowing, that you're going to be able to do that. So one of the things I know that we did and was done at the Water District was signs. So that people always knew, you know, signs that said, in an emergency, look at a station, you know, AM 240 or 11:40 or whatever it is. But, you know, Sammamish emergency, you know, AM, so they knew the station number to zoom into in an emergency so that they knew, here's the emergency, here the roads are open. So just so they knew what the emergency station is for Sammamish. And that's one thing that people really don't know, but they really should know. Because that's one way we can keep them up to date. So that would be one thing I think we need to really get the information out for. And I think that would help a lot. And maybe signage is the way to do that outside of the newsletters and everything else is to have that signs along some of our major corridors. But the TMP, I'm hoping that you will work with Jeff to make sure that some of our major routes are in that TMP and listed for emergency corridors. The other question I had was related to, do we have maps that are available that show our pipelines? So the gas pipeline across the city and where the earthquake vault is and all that stuff? So we know where some of our obvious issues could be?
Yes, I'm pretty, I know that I have them. I have to check to see if it's something that is just a public document that, you know, is not protected under critical infrastructure. But I think for most people, it's fairly obvious where the Williams Pipeline is. I know where GIS folks have that as well. I've looked at those layers myself. It is a 40-inch high-capacity, you know, pipeline.
Right.
That, you know, if it breaks, would be a bad day for Sammamish, to say the least. But, you know, going back to your first point about how we get that messaging out, yes, we have an AM radio station, AM 540. It's not the, definitely not my first go-to, right? It is a cumbersome beast with spotty reception. However, we do, we can push mass notification messages out from my phone to the entire population. Or I can have King County OEM would do that through Alert King County, which hits not only landlines, but SMS, text messages, cell phones, and we can do that. So one of the things, again, going back to that evacuation study that is soon to be hopefully underway, is looking at what zones make sense, right? If it is going to take, if we know that our traffic infrastructure is so limited that if we issued a citywide evacuation, it would look like, you know, Hurricane Rita where it's just gridlocked and people stuck on the roads and it's actually creating more risk? And we have to do more of a phased or zoned approach to evacuation to this threat? And then, again, it comes with that public education component. Because if you, you know, say, hey, we only want Prosex to evacuate right now. And everyone says, well, you know what? If there's a fire, I'm going either way. And then everyone gets in three cars in their household and they clog up the street. So it comes with that huge preparedness or that outreach component as well. So there's ways we need to get it out there.
Have to say, it's, you know, one car per household or something. So, yeah, it's that sort of situation where I would anticipate, you know, that's the sort of thing that I would anticipate. That's more on your level where, you know, I have to look at it as, okay, from my level, I want to see, here are the routes. And it's our job to make sure that we've, you know, we've identified the routes, we've made them open to the public, we've made the public aware. Your job is to figure out if they can take one car or five cars and you get it down to all the nitty-gritty's. Okay, so, but it'd be great if we can, you know, the obvious things, you know, like the fault line, which, you know, where we've had infrastructure damage before. So we know that that's a great possibility. And so in the fault line, we're, you know, on the gas line where we know that's, you know, could be a big problem. So then the other question I had, let me go to my list here. Oh, are we in sync with the, the Water District has got their own emergency plan? So are we in sync with, I know you're in sync with the schools, but are we in sync with the Water District's plan as well?
Yeah, we work, actually, we're in several, you know, committees, you know, monthly groups that meet together. And I work very closely with Laura from the, you know, the Northeast District and Janet Saylor down at the Stan Platt. So we worked on the hazard mitigation plans together. We're bumping ideas off each other. And when we do have events, when we're meeting with the Sammamish, you know, Safety Committee and so forth, both those groups were part of the team.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Great job.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
Hi, Andrew. Thank you for being here tonight. My question has to do with the fact that you've already been through an emergency, a real emergency with COVID. And I'm not going to quiz you about, like, what did you learn and stuff like that? But I am interested in finding out, you guys probably did document what you did learn in terms of where were we smart, where were we not smart? What could we improve on? And I just want to know, where is that documented?
It's been, we haven't conducted a full after-action as far as I am aware of with the city. I know early on, we were looking at what revisions to continuity of operations, how that'd be categorized. A lot of this was all compiled within a group kind of teams document. We were all very remote. The state and county are just now starting to conduct their kind of more formal after-actions. We're still under an emergency declaration right now. And I'm sure the acting city manager can speak on this as well. But there was a lot of discussions of that actor action, kind of what worked within a process during kind of Operation Real Pants, when they were looking at bringing people back to work. You know, this incident is not over. But, you know, I think especially for Sammamish, Sammamish has lost about a third of the fatalities that we've seen in the past more than two years in the last three months. So it is definitely ongoing for Sammamish. And it's something we still need to resonate. But a formal after-action process will be completed and as well as improvement plans to go along with that. Because that's one thing you want to do is ensure that you are making those measurable steps forward.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
I had a question, hang on, I can't get to my hand button again. There we go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Andrew, so you were going through the numbers. Can you tell me how many we have lost since the beginning of the year?
I, you know, the, I believe eight. I'd have to look at the dashboard, out of 25.
Wow.
So I need to go, they changed their dashboards up a little bit and it doesn't break it down for a jurisdiction the same size as Sammamish as far as like the exact demographics. I do know that majority of the people who've, you know, you've seen this are most possibly, you know, more vulnerable, the elderly populations as well.
Right, right.
But we are still seeing it. You've seen an increase, you know, about 35% increase across King County in the last week alone in just cases. But we also have, you know, over 95% vaccination rates, right? So there are some definitely, you know, possibly complex factors on what that is. I can't break it down specifically to Democrats like, oh, we had an 89-year-old pass away last week. I don't know that information. Either it was public health or where they're getting it from. Or they're at least not sharing it with me. But I can look back, I believe it's been about eight.
That's, that's high. Thank you.
Great. Any other last comments or questions?
Just one.
Yeah.
Andrew, so clearly we're not to recovery yet.
This is, COVID's different, right? Because COVID has been response and recovery at the same time. And again, that is, you see that in any crisis, right? Even in an earthquake, you're going to immediately begin some steps of recovery. We are in recovery. We are in recovery through, you know, through our small business grant programs, through our human service programs, through trying to, again, get to a sense of normalcy, even if it's a new normal, right? So the reopenings of schools and getting children back and getting businesses and restaurants, that's all part of this kind of broad recovery process. The difference is, this is not something where we can just simply rebuild infrastructure and, you know, re-home individuals and, you know, get people back to work and be done with because we're still living with it.
So we're still in mitigation and response and recovery?
I think this one covers all four phases.
That's, that's kind of, okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone else? Questions, comments? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you so much, Andrew.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Absolutely. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you. All right, so next up we have overview of plan to adopt the TCIP. So I'll hand it over to you, Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And our transportation team is going to be promoted here momentarily. And that'll be Jeff Elikis, Doug McIntyre, and Audrey Starcy. So as they get geared up, they are going to walk us through the intro to the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan process.
Doug, are you on board?
I am here, yes. Give me a second to get the screen shared.
Super. My name is Jeff Elikis, Public Works Director. Doug McIntyre will be leading our presentation tonight. And so Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and Acting City Manager. Our topic tonight is the introduction of the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan or TIP for just short. We'll explain that here in a moment in our acronyms. But Doug will be leading the primary presentation. And if there's Q and A, Doug and Audrey or Deputy Director will be available. So Doug, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor Valchow and members of the council. My name is Doug McIntyre. I am the Senior Transportation Planning Manager. Can everyone see my screen? Okay. Okay, been on there. So tonight, as mentioned, we will be talking about the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan for the six-year timeframe of 2023 to 2028. I wanted to just give a kind of a quick overview of who we are. I know this is a slide that we want to use kind of collectively as the Public Works Department. So I want to kind of root it in, again, who we are. So I'm a part of the Transportation Planning Division. We're one of seven divisions in the Public Works Department. Our team comprises four positions, myself, a currently vacant transportation planner position, management analyst, and that is Rory Kirkpatrick, and then a community transportation coordinator, who is Jen Rubinell. So the three of us currently make up the team. As you can see on the right is our 2022 work plan. This is a pretty aggressive work plan. We have quite a few things that span a range of topics. And as you can see in the red box there, this is the effort we're talking about tonight. So we're going to cover kind of broadly just four topic areas in the presentation tonight. First, we're going to start with the background on the TCIP and the current status of it. We know that three members of the council have not gone through a tip process before. And so we want to provide a level of understanding before we dive into some of the detail. We're going to give an overview of the plan to adopt the tip and make sure that council is okay with that plan. And then we'll go over some upcoming important dates and then end with some discussion. So as far as background goes, we have a few points we want to make about the tip. First of all, this is a requirement of all cities in Washington. We all must adopt a six-year comprehensive improvement plan for our transportation system. This is a requirement of RCW 3577010. Again, applies to all cities in Washington. The tip itself has been updated annually. And then it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Those are kind of really important points stressed in the RCW. And then there's a few other points here. The tip is a planning-level document. So it does not, it's not a budget. It does not establish any expense authority for projects. It is simply a way to plan out how we invest in our system. The tip is also a requirement for grant funding eligibility. We're sort of finding that out the hard way recently. But the tip is really important for funders. They want to see what your plan is. Are you planning to complete these projects in the near term? And then finally, I probably should have put this bullet first, but the acronym TCIP refers to the Transportation Capital Improvement Program. We want to acknowledge that it is the capital plan for transportation. Historically, at least recently, the city has not adopted any annual or biannual capital plan for the whole city. So this tip effectively is our capital plan. I will probably call it a tip just for the ease of the term. It's easier, it rolls off the tongue a little easier. But TCIP is really what it is. And that has actually been used, terminology that has been used in the recent past for the tips adopted at least going back to 2019. So we just want to make it really clear that that is our capital plan for transportation. One more kind of background slide here is, this is actually an aspirational slide, an aspirational graphic here. This is where we want to be. And the reason why I kind of consider this a background slide is because the tip is not done in a vacuum. We know that the city has many capital needs. It is not just transportation. There are parks, there are facilities, et cetera. But transportation is obviously very important to the city. So we want to eventually get to this 12-month cycle, which is shown on the screen. And that would really begin in January, where we review the data of the previous year. What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What can be improved? We would then go out and collect data. That would include potential crash analysis, traffic counts. As you received the presentation back in March, you now have a local road safety plan which really does focus on crash data. And then, of course, we do traffic counts every April. And then that would then inform the tip planning. That generally speaking would occur between May and June of each year. And then that would lead into adoption by the council in June so that we can submit it to the state in July, which is again a requirement of this process. By July 1st, we should be, we are required to submit the tip to the state of Washington. And then once we adopt a tip, we really kind of talk more broadly about other city needs for capital improvements. Again, parks, facilities, all kinds, school, fire, all of that. And that would occur generally, again, speaking between August and September of each year. And then that information would then fill or feed into the adoption of the budget, whether that's the biennial budget or the mid-biennial adjustments. But basically, that would then solidify the citywide capital needs. And then from there, we would be able to actually fund capital projects in that biennial and really where the rubber meets the road implementation. So the purpose of the tip really, it's these three highlights. There are other benefits of having a tip, but these are really the three highlights. First is it provides transparency to the community. It shows the community how we intend to invest in our system. It's really clear about what and when projects are going to be planned. It also then identifies solutions to projects, whether that's a concurrency failure in the system or a safety improvement. It can also address non-motorized needs. But really, it does identify those solutions in the system. We have a lot of needs in our system, they are various. And the tip helps us kind of cleanly lay them out for the community. And then, of course, probably more, most importantly is that we show the timeframe within which we plan to complete those projects. It's a general timeframe, but it does help us with estimating costs and spreading out the cost of all those needs in the six-year window. So where are we at now? This is kind of an important time for us. So for reference, the city has not adopted a tip since 2019, which was covering the 2020, 2025 six-year timeframe. So in 2020 and 2021, we got legal advice and to not adopt a tip, given the pending EIS effort. There was too much risk going forward with that. So we were advised by legal to skip the adoption on those two years. So our most recently adopted version is the one adopted in 2019 and it covers the six-year window of 2020 to 2028. So we've issued the final EIS now. And so the focus is now, for that effort at least, going to be on the code and comprehensive plan amendments needed to implement the preferred alternative in the EIS. Council will get a briefing on that on May 10. And we'll go over more detail regarding that at that point in time. But suffice it to say for now, is that the effort to amend the code and the comp plan will result in a whole new set of projects that we will need to evaluate for our six-year planning window. And those would primarily be related to growth for roadway segments and. So with that, our plan moving forward to adopt the six-year window of 2023 to 2028, we are going to compile a tip right now that addresses the intersection-only, the intersection-only level of service system we have now. So that does not include the growth-related roadway segment for core road. So it's a much more narrow tip in that regard. Then, once we would adopt the code and comprehensive. Then, once we would adopt the code and comprehensive plan amendments related to the preferred alternative in the EIS later in 2022, at that point, we would go in and add those projects from that list and then re-adopt the tip. We would re-adopt the tip after a public hearing at that point in time to make sure the community is aware of what's going on and have the ability to testify on it. And then, again, just kind of crucially here is that RCW does authorize revisions to the tip at any time, just as long as you hold a new public hearing. So as we move forward on this version of the tip, we really wanted to start with an understanding of what's going to be in the tip. The starting point for all this, of course, is how much money can we talk about here? How much money is the city council going to assume is in the tip? That has effects throughout the document. So we want to start by saying that there are revenue assumptions that we need to make for this. We've broken them down into three categories. The high-probability sources of revenue, the good-probability sources of revenue, and the fair-probability sources of revenue. An example of a high-probability source of revenue is REIT funds. That stands for Real Estate Excise Tax Funds. Those are funds that the city gets through real estate transactions. Those are pretty well-assumed in our, in our planning, and we can count on pretty, pretty seriously. An example of a good probability source of revenue is a grant, and in this case, a good example of that is the TIB grants. TIB stands for Transportation Improvement Board. That is a state grant program. And we think that we can be pretty successful there and can assume with a good sense of probability that we could get some of those funds. And then something, as far as fair probability goes, would be something like federal grants. Those are highly competitive. We have to go through PSRC for those funds, and there's just, there's really no way to tell if we can do it. We think we can be competitive, but a lot depends on getting those grants, including how much money is being allocated by Congress. So the reason why we want to split it out this way is for kind of a really important purpose. And there's, there's a term that we use called financial commitment. So in the tip, if we are showing funds allocated to a project, we are assuming that that project will have a financial commitment. That is important because, once a project has a financial commitment, we are going to assume that it gets built in the six-year window. And that assumption then allows project capacity to be built into our traffic modeling. And the traffic modeling is what applicants go through for concurrency certificates. And so we want to assume the most realistic set of revenue that we can. We want to then have it meet the project costs such that everything is balanced as best as we possibly can. So we are showing a realistic tip that does not rely on funds that we don't think we can actually achieve. So again, this is a really important point. We want to break it down in the most realistic fashion that we can. We think that this, this assumption on the screen helps us do that. Then the other, the other kind of side of the coin on the tip is the project list. So this is equally important to the revenues. You know, where are we going to spend our money and what projects are we going to undertake? There are five categories of projects on the tip. There are intersection, safety, and intelligent traffic system projects, ITS. There are corridor, safety, and system completion projects. There are programs, regional partnerships, and then long-range system completion projects. For the long-range system completion projects, we are actually not showing any funding allocated to any of those projects. Those are years seven and out essentially. But we want to put them on the tip so that we can keep track of them and make sure that funders and others, the community, that they know that these are on our list of things that we want to achieve in the long run. There's been a little bit of discussion on this. The little note at the bottom there is project prioritization being contemplated for this tip. That is something that is optional and something that we haven't done in the past, but we do think that council might want to consider that for this round. I will say that by showing projects and funding for certain years in the tip, you are sort of informally prioritizing it, but there is an opportunity for us to explicitly prioritize it and provide scoring to it. And we can get into that in more detail on April 26th. We kind of want to just maybe get a head nod from council if this is something that we think might be pursued. And then that way, we can sort of build it into our plan for this round of it. And then, as far as upcoming council presentation dates go, this slide has actually been amended since the agenda bill was developed based on recent conversations with council about prioritization. So this will look different than your agenda bill just had done. But essentially, we do have the special meeting coming up on the 26th of April. That is a workshop, and the reason why we scheduled it as a special meeting is that the tip is a really kind of in-depth topic that we are sort of, we want to spend the right amount of time with council on it, and so we wanted to take it, take it as its own meeting. That would allow us to do a deep dive. We're going to include our finance counterparts in this conversation on the 26th. That includes Aaron Anton and Kristina Muni. They are the ones who are experts on revenues and can help us kind of walk council through that part of the conversation. And then also talk about project prioritization, as I mentioned. On May 10th, assuming council wants to prioritize projects on the tip, we would then look for kind of a head nod or a go-no-go decision from council on, yes, this is what we want to do, and this is the methodology with which we'd like to do it. And then that would lead us into the May 24th special workshop. Again, we wanted to do another special workshop to give the tip enough time for all the discussions that we would need to have. This one would be a slightly different focus than the 26th of April, and it would focus a little bit more on the projects and then really kind of the preliminary draft of that, of that tip. We can go through the spreadsheet itself. That would then lead us into June 7th at a regular meeting to discuss the draft tip and open the hearing. And then that hopefully will get us to July 5th and allow us to adopt. So that leaves us with next steps here. We have a list of about eight next steps, and just so council's aware. Essentially, the first thing we need to do is review council input from tonight. We need to adjust as needed and build it into our plan going forward. We're going to continue working with our engineering teams, both the CIP folks and the traffic folks, to make sure that we have a good project list, to make sure we're assuming the right projects and studying the right things, and that it's effective. We're also going to continue working with our finance department to refine our financial assumptions, such as revenue. Again, that's a really important part of this. We are also looking to receive direction on that project prioritization methodology, as I mentioned, so that's one thing that we need moving forward. And then to finish it off here for next steps, we want to continue looking for grant opportunities and finding that information. We are sort of building from scratch a grant program right now, which you had a little taste of that at the meeting, I believe it was last week, about the Southeast Eight Corridor for funding through the PSRC competitive program. So we're really trying to understand what we think we can get, what projects we can get the funds for, and how we build that into the tip. And then obviously, continue developing the draft of the tip. That's, you know, something that does take quite a bit of work, and we've got to do a lot of adjustments as we go. Of course, we need to hold the public hearing and gather public testimony, and then finally adopt and transmit the document to the workshop. So I'm going to leave the council with these three questions. These were in the agenda bill. They have been revised slightly from the agenda bill. But basically, what we want to leave council, or leave this meeting with tonight is hopefully an understanding of that council agrees with the approach to how we're planning the 2023-2028 tip. We also want to get a little bit of discussion going about this council wish to prioritize projects within the tip. And then, understanding if there's anything additional that council would need prior to the workshop on the 26th of April. If there's any, you know, information we could provide, any additional analysis, we want to know that now so that we can help have a really good conversation. So with that, I'll stop talking and turn it over to Jeff.
Back to you, Mayor. Okay, so council, if you have questions, feel free to use that raise your hand feature. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you for the presentation. That was very helpful. I would like to know, on one of your prior slides, you talk about doing a public hearing. How do you ingest information from the public back into your process when it happens kind of late in the process? Or am I not understanding that?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So it is typical to hold the hearing closer to when you have the adoption and the decision. We do want to give the community an opportunity to give comments on a draft that is likely to be adopted. With regard to the tip, if we're moving projects, so say hypothetically that the community really supports a project that isn't on the tip. We could, we could, you know, take that, take that information and assuming council gives us direction for, for members of the council, support that as well. We can, we could pretty quickly revise and kind of massage the tip to reflect that. We might have to discuss with council if other projects have to drop off the tip, just based on financial constraints. But I think we're pretty confident that we can adjust pretty quickly on that. It's, it is a relatively dynamic document. Again, if we adopt a tip and then realize that we want to amend it immediately, we can do that as well. The RCW does allow for as many revisions as you want as a council, and just as long as you hold public hearings for that. So, so yeah, it's a little bit of an art form, but yeah, I think we can, we can, we can do that. It's something that we're.
Okay, and I have a couple more questions. As you're looking at, or as we're looking as a, as an organization at different prioritization of projects, are we able to build a decision matrix that allows us to weight certain pieces of information? Like, I might want to weight safety, for example, over something else, aesthetics. Is that how you look at creating these types of decision documents?
Yeah, yeah, and that's a really good question. So just by way of example, what we did under the TMP, which was not adopted but done most recently, is we had criteria that the community helped us build. We had six criteria. We added a seventh one. And we scored projects based on how well they met that criteria. And then, to help us with getting a better spread of the project scoring, which really helps with prioritization, we did weight certain criteria. So safety was weighted two times, public input was weighted two times, you know, that, that kind of thing. So that we could, could understand that, yes, there are criteria that are important, but some are more important than others, like safety. So yes, that is absolutely something that we did. And on the 26th, we can explain a little bit more detail about how, you know, how we would suggest going through the prioritization based on, you know, because developing a prioritization scheme is actually relatively complex and takes a lot of time. And so we want to do it the right way, but we also want to use what we already have. And using what we already have, I think, can help us because we have a baseline of understanding, and the community is familiar with that previous system.
Okay, and my last question has to do with the Planning Commission. I didn't notice a joint meeting here with the Planning Commission, but is that anticipated?
That has not been done in the past. I.
Would there be an advantage to doing something like that?
So the Planning Commission typically deals with comp plan and code amendments and that kind of, you know, those kinds of policy things. The tip is a functional element of all of this. You know, capital planning is sort of outside of, it's informed by policy, of course. It is, it has to be consistent with policy, but it is sort of one of those functional plans, if I may. You know, the comprehensive plan is our policy guidance document. The code is obviously regulation standards. The capital program is functional in nature. So typically speaking, the planning commission have not been involved in that. So I.
You can't really speak to that? Yeah, I could, because they've been so separate. Okay, well, that, thank you for that explanation. I, I just wonder if that provides some background or context for projects by just having that, that broader piece. But thank you for answering my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's move on.
Hi, Doug. I just wanted to say that I did agree with the approach. Your approach sounds pretty sound and reasonable. I would like to see the projects prioritized based on the methodology that you guys are talking about. And so thank you for having an additional meeting later to walk us through that and to help us just get a better understanding of how that methodology works and so that we can, like, take a look at your list and then maybe, you know, with a better understanding, if there's things we want to shift, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, hi, Doug. So I agree with the approach. I wish to prioritize, I wish to prioritize the projects within the TCIP. The other thing I would ask, just that I would, could have an hour-long meeting with staff to discuss the rating model. So maybe that's for the city manager. I need to schedule a meeting before this one. I'd also, at that meeting, would like to just discuss the Bluma EIS and how that impacts the TCIP. And then what I'm, my main intent is to look for unintended consequences or things that, or to answer the question, if we do this project, can we, does that eliminate another project? Or those kind of questions where there's some kind of unintended consequences or there's consequences to the actions based on the projects we pick or don't pick? Is that possible?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We can, we can work with the city manager's office to set that up.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Back to you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please go.
A point of clarification, Councilmember Trine, you used the terminology rating model. Could you, could you provide a little bit more clarity what you meant by the quote rating model?
Well, aren't you guys, when, oh my gosh. So it was the, I believe, Doug, it was back in 2019 when we looked at a tip for projects being rated as to which one would take priority.
Okay, so we're talking about the last TMP, the criteria that we used, and you're wanting, that's what you're referring to is.
That was what I was referring to, yes.
Okay, I, thank you. I appreciate that clarity. And then you asked for a special, separate meeting to go over that. And so I, I guess I'll defer to city manager to schedule whatever it is you're looking for on a special needs basis there.
Yeah, it'll probably take a half an hour to an hour. If that's all right.
Councilmember Ren.
Well, I have some of the same questions that Councilmember Trine has regarding rating. I don't care if you want to call it rating or the scoring system. But I can probably try to just sit in on that same meeting. I agree with the approach. But yeah, I, I just have, I have the same sort of questions. And then putting in with Bluma because it seems like if we address particular projects, we may be able to, we might trigger something, or we might be able to avoid certain projects. So, yeah, I just, and it would all depend on how they're rated. So, yeah, I, I think I'd just rather just sit in on the conversation.
So, so one quick comment regarding the rating or the prioritization or the ranking, I think those are all now synonymous terms. Doug is going, Doug and our team are going to go through on the 26th with a very deep dive into what we did in the past from the TMP, that whole model. There was a, a past agenda bill that we sent out this week, just from a reference standpoint, based on communication with the mayor. We are going to go through all of that and give you the historical, the hows and whys pieces. And I think that'll give everybody the same foundation. And then if we want to have, you know, Karen or whoever wants to have special meetings, that can be served up through the city manager's office. But we are planning to give you a deep dive into that whole deal to have that context. So I want, I wanted to be clear on that, just so that we, that's, that's one of the pieces of next, excuse me, on the 26th, our time together is to dive into that to a great level of detail.
I guess what raised a lot of my questions, so, because I read through that today, and I can think that's kind of what raised a lot of my questions. So I, I can do whatever, whatever works.
I think just for clarification of the balance of council, if there's going to be a separate meeting involving a pair of council members, that that information get disseminated to the full council? Or we hold until that April deep dive, and Mr. Acting City Manager, I'll leave that in your court. But it would be helpful if there's information disseminated at a separate meeting that the full council then receives kind of an overview, just so we're kind of all on the same playing field with the discussions surrounding the prioritization method.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just briefly, I think what might be helpful is to try to understand what some of those questions are to help guide the conversation on the 26th. And then if there, if we don't hit. And then if there if we don't hit and meet the mark for what councilmembers Trin and Moran are alluding to. On the 26th, then we could possibly do a follow up or a follow up memo or something along those lines to try to get in in the to the more of the deep dive. But if we if we can flesh out what those questions are, my guess is that the rest of council, as you're pointing out, would be interested in hearing the answers. And I think that'd be very helpful for the group. So we'll we'll work together on that one and see if we can get the questions out ahead of time for everybody. So that there's a common understanding of what we're trying to answer.
Perfect, that'd be great. Just from my perspective, to answer the questions that Scott was seeking. Yes, I agree with the approach planned for the tip or TCIP, whatever we want to call it now. And then, yes, to prioritization with the caveat that I think we need to broadly. Project to the community that while we may prioritize projects that we want to embark on. That there has to be a pretty large asterisk behind that. Circumstances always change. Things like COVID pop up that you just don't anticipate. There could be property acquisition problems that become, you know, a problem or, you know, unanticipated issues. And so I think while we might have a end up with a prioritize list, it is always possible that the priorities change given circumstances. So I just think that should be a caveat. But I do think it is good to have a roadmap. That way, staff, council and the community all know what direction we're moving in. But again, I recognize that not everything always goes according to plan. So I don't think I need any additional information aside from whatever might be discussed relative to the prioritization method. If that occurs before that meeting on the 26th. Jeff?
Yeah, two two comments, one to Karen Howe, Councilmember Howe's point about planning commission. In my former life at another agency, it was the city's practice to take the tip through the planning commission. And so for future policy, I don't know that we can pull it off this season. But if it becomes the will of the council to do that in the future, then that circle of life that he was showing us. We incorporate that and buy ourselves time and bandwidth to allow that to occur. I don't think that we have the time and bandwidth to make the July. It's just there's too much to discuss. We're redoing this for really the first time in three years. So but in the future, if there's policy guidance collectively by the council that in the future thou shalt do. Then we need to know that and then figure that out. And so it would be new to Samamish. And I know Doug just went, oh, my God, I need more people. But aside from that issue, it is plausible that other agencies, at least ones that I've worked in the past, have done that part. So I wanted to make that comment. Second, and lastly, on the issue of prioritization, two comments I'll make. From time to time, not only do we have the primary prioritization, but certain funding schemes will cause us to pull a certain group of projects together. Whereby we need to do a refine or a further prioritization. And we've had to do that on occasion because we've had three projects that were equal. Just, you know, you got 100 projects, but three of them are going to compete well, but they all have the same score. So what are some further distinguishments? And this goes to Mayor Malchow's point of it needs to be flexible. The other piece with prioritization, if we have 100 projects on the list, moving projects from the future tips, i.e. What I envision is I've always envisioned the idea of three tips, if you will, a six year, a seven year and a 12 year. How do you move projects from the from the big list, you know, every year and move them forward? Prioritization helps to do that, subject to funding, right? And and the funding will depend on, is it only just city money or is it the grant money that's available? So I just wanted to get that context out for for those two things as as we were listening. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, so I did have one additional comment. And it certainly would impact the prioritization of projects that we do and ultimately what projects we do. And that's the the motion that I made last year and that council passed, which was relative to just investigating. The purchase of service off the top from King County Metro. And council has not heard anything back from that. I know there were some discussions, but I'm not sure if we have any relevant information on where that is. But that would be helpful for us to understand.
Absolutely, yeah. So a memo is forthcoming. We have been trying to get that fit into the work plan. We have met with Metro several times now, probably three or four times since that motion was made. And having really good conversations with them about collaboration and how much it costs to buy service. What the service might look like, how we can go about it. So we do plan to have Metro come and provide a presentation to council. Hopefully, in the in the near term, potentially by summer, I think is is feasible. We need to make sure we fit in with their calendars, too. But yeah, you're you're absolutely right that that has been sort of a loose end that we haven't closed with council yet. But we we have been working on it in the background. We just haven't gotten to the point where we have a communication to council on it.
Perfect, yeah, appreciate the follow up on that. Look forward to hearing about that.
Yeah, thank you.
So I don't think I see any additional hands up. Scott, Jeff, do you guys feel like you have, Doug, do you feel like you have what you need from council as far as direction on those three policy related questions you needed from us?
Yeah, yeah, I I do. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate the input, very helpful, and we will come back with some detailed information on the 26th.
Nice job, Doug, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate that. Okay, council, our next item is the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan. Mr. City Manager. Pardon?
Are we going to take a five minute before we continue?
If you like.
Health and safety.
Okay. I would say let's be back here at midnight, but it's only midnight my time, so.
And Mayor, when we come back, Audrey will be introducing the topic for Laughing Jacobs, just so you know.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, just making sure we've got everybody back on, looks like it. Okay, so council, our next item is the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan. And Audrey, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The surfaces from water division of Public Works will be presenting the draft Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan to you this evening. And leading that conversation will be the city's senior engineer, Stormwater Engineer Toby Kanan, along with the GeoTech, GeoSynTech consulting team, Christian Nielsen and Joel Prock. So I believe they should be coming online in just a few minutes and we'll get the presentation going for you.
No, thank you, Audrey, I just joined as a panelist, so. Yeah, let me get going here. Okay. First off, can everybody see the screen? Before we get going, okay, thank you.
We can, yes, thank you.
Thank you. As Audrey said, I am Toby Kanan, I'm a senior stormwater engineer with Public Works. And I'm here to introduce the draft Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan. Tonight, we'll walk through the overall basin planning process, touch on the planned content and then discuss our next steps. I was like outline what we're asking of council. Obviously, this is a this is a study session, so we have a real short list today. First, we're simply asking council to receive the draft plan and allow us to finalize the document. And then secondly, recognize a path to adopt the plan. Before we jump into the presentation, I wanted to introduce the project team. GeoSynTech has been a real asset helping me before me, Danica Globikar moved this project forward. Joined tonight by Joel Prock and Christian Nielsen. These guys have been headed from day one, so it's a real asset for me. Second one, I'd also like to acknowledge the city of Issaquah. We partnered with Issaquah through an interlocal agreement to complete this plan. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the efforts of Alan Quinn, who's a senior engineer with the city Public Works Department. He's been a real help as well. So with that, let's get rolling. Program context, this is similar to the slide that Doug showed, looking at his project. We hope you'll become familiar with this as Public Works begins to present information to council in the coming months. The goal here is to just give a quick snapshot of how this project relates to the broader broader Public Works efforts. And in this case, we're dealing with the Public Works Stormwater Group. We are obviously a self funded utility. It's financed through rates paid by the residents and non residential commercial properties within the community. We've got two discrete budget areas. The first is the 408 and 438 funds. Our planning work, it all comes through, excuse me, the 408 fund. And the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan is being paid for out of that bucket. So GeoSynTech, we'll begin there, started with this project before the pandemic in early 2019. We're nearly at three years as we approach the finish line here. I listed some of the key milestones. We initiated public outreach and workshops almost immediately after getting underway. We did suspend activity for close to a year due to COVID and then subsequent staffing shortfalls. But following that delay, we resumed project work and then moved into a webinar last fall. That helped us update the public. And then we followed that with a quick informational presentation to council at the beginning of January. I believe that might have been your first meeting of the year. So after today's meeting, we're looking for council to adopt the plan through consent agenda item next May. I also wanted to give, you know, quickly reacquaint folks with the Laughing Jacobs Basin. This is the most southerly basin watershed within the city. And it totals about 3,600 acres. Of that, about 80% is within the city and the remainder outside of the city. In total, this represents about 16% of the total total area within our municipal boundary. A big disclaimer about the study that we put together, it does exclude Beaver Lake. Early in the program, we recognized that the lake presents a really unique set of conditions. And we decided that this really ought to be considered independent of the rest of the basin. We didn't want to kind of mix apples and oranges with that one. This slide should look a bit familiar from January presentation. It's good to remind ourselves why we're pursuing basin planning and how this relates to some of the other efforts within our stormwater group. First, we're doing this for a couple reasons. The city's stormwater comp plan frankly directs us to do this. It's one of the explicit goals within it. And then secondly, the city's municipal stormwater permit, it's our NPDES permit, requires basin planning as one of its elements. And generally, basin planning dovetails into a couple other, you know, current stormwater utility efforts, including the Stormwater Management Action Plan. That's a current NPDES requirement. And then finally, it ties in our retrofit strategy, which council adopted last year. In total, these three are really geared toward prioritizing how stormwater dollars are spent to best protect our resources as we tackle existing problems. As we you review the plan, I think it's important to consider, you know, what this basin plan is. And I think just as importantly, what it is not. We're obviously trying to accomplish certain goals. These include characterizing the existing basin conditions, identifying efforts that can benefit the basin. And then effectively directing resources to address our current concerns. And as we look at what we're not trying to do. I think one thing we're not trying to do, I think, is weigh in on current and future development work. The city has a significant organization in place to tackle that. Dedicated staff and regulations devoted to, you know, development review and what have you. So there is a clear cut distinction there. And then secondly, this isn't necessarily a capital facility. Excuse me, capital facility plan or capital improvement plan. It's more of a basic outline that presents basin improvement strategies that we can roll into a CIP. The graphic on the the sheet here offers a quick reminder that the basin plan ultimately informs a CIP. And that in turn generates our annual capital projects that we take on. One of the key aspects of the planning started with soliciting public input. Before COVID was underway, we were able to host a really well attended open house. And we also conducted a survey, got a fair amount of public feedback. There's a lot of really solid comments that we collected to that effort. More recently, as I noted, we hosted a webinar and provided a progress report to residents. And kind of updated folks on where we were with things. Moving forward, we're seeking seeking feedback to the draft plan that is in the agenda packet. And we'll be doing that through the Connect Samamish website. We're expecting to have that draft plan available for public review either tomorrow or Thursday. We will submit public comments for a couple of weeks and then wrap up responses to those by the end of the month. Unless an issue is very significant, you know, that's uncovered through this. And triggers a major revision to the draft plan, we would anticipate returning to council on April 3rd for plan adoption through the consent agenda. So let's dive into some of the planned content. We'll start our outreach outreach effort indicates residents' interests are focused in a couple of areas. First, the feedback suggested that people want to strike a balance that allows public use and enjoyment in some of these critical areas. And also they want to strive for environmental protection of them as well. And equal equal interest in, you know, achieving both of those. And the second thing we uncovered is that people are most interested in protecting and investing dollars in wetland shorelines and some of the other water resources. And cataloging the different resources within the basin. Report identified a couple of key areas. First, there's a few sphagnum bogs within the basin. These are characterized by unique plant community and hydrology cycles. During, I think, our last meeting, we noted that these, some of these have existed really since the last ice age. So Samamish is really fortunate to have these intact sphagnum bogs within the community. The other key resource that was identified is the coconie habitat within the lower stretches of Laughing Jacobs Creek. This is confined largely to the downstream area. Where a significant waterfall kind of impedes fish fish passage. This is in the area south of Providence Point along 33rd. That obviously extends down toward Lakes Samamish. Another takeaway from our review of the basin is that a lot of the wetland areas have managed to retain a significant amount of buffers and, you know, riparian corridors adjacent to them. This is actually fairly unusual for a developed urban watershed like Laughing Jacobs. So that's a, you know, another kind of key resource that we identified. You probably recall this slide from our January meeting. We attempted to compile all the different elements and traits that will inform how we move forward with our planning exercise. We cataloged the issues described by neighbors and uncovered through research and field review. We also presented the different opportunities that we identified through discussions and our own research. Overall, I think this helps flush out the range of factors that we uncovered during our work. And it's really good illustration of the kind of broader complexity of this process. The next step involved identifying specific projects that attempt to juggle these different issues and opportunities. This resulted in a couple of neighborhood bio retention facilities identified on the map here as 1A and 1B. These projects are geared toward protecting water quality in some of the largest sphagnum bogs, specifically Queens Bog in Kohani. And then the large bog complex on southeast 24th Street. We also had a couple of projects to improve water quality of the road runoff. And this is along the lower stretches of Laughing Jacobs Creek. That's shown in 2A and 2B in the map. These are both intended again to improve water quality where untreated runoff discharges to the coconie habitat. These projects are actually within the city of Issaquah. And as a result, Issaquah would obviously be responsible for planning and pursuing these projects further. The third significant project we identified was revegetating a segment of the creek. This had improved riparian habitat where the stream now runs through the horse pasture. And also buffer against increased water temperatures. And this exists in the area behind the Connor Jarvis development. And then our final project would provide water quality improvement by reconstructing a section of the stream channel near the Issaquah Pine Lake Road. We thought initially that this would be pursued in conjunction with road. We thought initially that this would be pursued in conjunction with road improvements, but there's no reason this couldn't be pursued as a standalone project as well. I put out too that the plan and the agenda includes a lot more detail of these projects, including, you know, planning level costs. So we encourage people to review that information. I think also wanted to look at how we selected these projects. I think that's almost as important as the projects that we ended up with. When developing a list of candidate projects, we really focused on responding to the residents' priorities. And we also made an effort to identify projects who we thought we could get built, you know, things that were realistic. We then ranked each of the candidate projects using criteria adopted by council in 2018. We did not make any adjustments adjustments to those results. Scoring is presented and ranked in the actual in the plan, so those hard numbers are included there. An obvious question with all this is, you know, what do we do with this information? The process offers a lot of important guidance. First, we're applying accepted city priorities to our different projects. So there's a, you know, a cohesive and systematic process for reviewing these things. Secondly, it establishes a foundation that we need to advance things into our CIP. Frankly, this is real similar to what Doug outlined with the transportation projects. You know, it's, the names are a little bit different, but you know, we're, we're seeing a pattern develop here. This also provides an objective way to compare, you know, the projects identified in the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan to, you know, other projects in the stormwater group, you know, things that might come up through maintenance needs identified by the maintenance group or what have you. So it gives a systematic way of comparing the two of those and making sure that we're looking at them, you know, in same criteria. The base plan is also a key step to queue up capital projects to skew our funding through an adopt budget. It's a, you know, important step in that process. And then finally, a word about grants. Grant eligibility can hinge on inclusion of a project in a basin plan. Again, this is real similar to what Doug identified. You know, funding is frequently contingent for, you know, projects in a TIP. So there's, there's value to the city in that respect as well. Well, I hope we've left you with a clear understanding that the draft Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan is a tool that builds on some of the general city policies, you know, expressed by the comp plan and some other resources. And doing that, I think we've outlined the path to protect some really valuable community resources. And, you know, indicate that we're also acting in a way that reflects some priorities and interests of the residents as well as the stormwater. So that wraps up our formal presentation. Remind folks that, you know, we'll conclude our public comments in the next couple of weeks and bring a plan before council adoption on May 3rd. I do thank you for your consideration. It's, you know, like most council meetings, it's a long night and, you know, attention is is always welcome. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor, Audrey. And Joel, Kristen and I will be available to respond to questions. So, thank you.
Thanks so much, council, if you'd use that raise hand feature. Councilmember Train.
Thank you, Mayor. Evan, this, I don't know who this is going to be for, the question, but it's about the hydro, limited hydrology or hydraulic modeling was conducted using existing models developed for other projects and studies. And so I'm just wondering, are we, are we thinking that we're going to go back and do another study on that? Or would you want to do that? It was limited, would we like to do a more in-depth one on this?
Yeah, I think GeoSynTech can handle that, but, you know, my first thoughts are, as the projects identified evolves, we will definitely dive into a more in-depth modeling.
And Toby, the reason why I say that is because I just looked at what happened down in Issaquah with the development that took place down there on the way to the lake. And I'm just like, wow, what did that channeling do to the water qual, you know, what is the hydrology then? How, how did it change? Is it now cutting instead, you know, it seems to me they could have done a little bit wider project there or allowed more buffering because they pretty much put it in a box or in a channel. So just wondering if we should need to look at that.
Yeah, if I can just add a little bit to what Toby said. The modeling we did was appropriate for a planning level study. This is not the same type of model you would do for a design project. Like Toby said, the basin plan establishes projects that would have a benefit. But when it comes to the actual configuration and the design, there would necessarily need to be another model, another engineering calculations that would be associated with that design. That being said, we used similar models to what you would use in design, but we didn't get as detailed as you would be for an individual project, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Train, one other point I would add to that is, you know, there's nothing within the framework of a basin plan that we can bring forward to, you know, influence the type of modeling that would be conducted on a, you know, a development project, for example. You know, that process is actually underway independently through our code amendment. You know, as well as obviously, you know, old E89, you know, current, I guess it's, is it E4, E5 now or E3?
Yeah, E4, E5.
Yeah. For the purposes of this discussion, we'll say E89. But yeah, those are, you know, just the nature of basin planning. It is kind of a standalone exercise. Unique to, you know, identifying existing, you know, issues within the basin and trying to tackle those. But yeah, your point is well taken.
So I get it. So the, the first step is to, is to get the plan in place, the basin plan. And then once we say, yeah, like the, the bogs, protect them for me.
Right.
Like, I mean, that's one council member's position that, you know, there's, there's, we have something very unique here in Simamish. They're called bogs. We need to protect those and I need clean water to, that helps protect the fish. So how do we do that? And that's what this plan is kind of saying. Here's how we're going to go about to make it so that the, this water, this basin plant, this watershed is protected and is doing what it's supposed to be doing. So I'm in support of, of it. And then I think at that point, we could, then it's about staff coming back and asking us for the money to, to do the actual projects within that, the money to do the retrofitting. And then encouraging our neighbor Issaquah to help in some of the projects down below that become barriers and removing them. That kind of the steps.
That, that's spot on. And I think, you know, one of the other concurrent efforts that we have underway, obviously, is our rate study that Audrey was spearheading.
Right.
And that's, you know, you know, there's kind of a train of events here that, that sequence, you know, the rate study will be built on in a CIP. And that CIP will be built on, you know, the comp plan. It'll be identified, you know, identified projects from the different basin plans or retrofit study. There's a whole host of them that we'll, you know, kind of put in the pot. And then through the consistent, you know, ranking that was adopted by resolution. You know, we'll have a, you know, a real objective way to evaluate these different projects. And similar to the traffic one, you know, we may end up with four, five or 10 or whatever that all end up with the same rating. And as funding dictates and, you know, priorities dictate, we can refine that effort. But it is intended to be a somewhat flexible process that allows, you know, us to tackle you know, those projects that we deem important. So, thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. My question has, I may be jumping ahead and it's really just helped me understand the, the, the process and the report that you're giving us. On section 5.2.6, where we're talking about the new Issaquah school, district school that would be coming into the area and creating new runoff perhaps that we, you know, that more than is there today. And that it, this section would be left untreated typically to discharge into the creek. Now, you, you're projecting that there are different things you would do for treatment, but the statement, as much as feasible given the site constraints. So when I see something like that in a report, I get concerned that, I just want to understand, how would you address that? What's feasible given site constraints? How far do you go? How far do you? That, that's the piece that is kind of missing for me.
Sure.
And so it's not specifically that piece, but that in general about the report.
No, that's a good question. And I think one thing that is interesting is the code evolves. You know, the, the city obviously operates under a permit from the Department of Ecology. And we get a new permit every few years. And one of the reasons why we do do that is because, you know, what is feasible? What is, you know, that's an evolving standard. And, you know, I've been doing civil engineering for 30 years and I can report that it has always gotten more stringent. It is, there has not been any backsliding in that respect. So there is an expectation that, you know, it will continue to get more stringent. And I think part two of that again is that, you know, the retrofit strategy, for example, in the basin planning, the real focus is on identifying existing areas of concern and then trying to shore those up and bring those up as far as we can. And as, you know, corrective measures for existing problems, there's a little more flexibility that we can apply. Whereas if you're looking at new development, those rules are ironclad. There's no, no quarter given or they're compelled, you know, to the fullest, fullest extent, you know, to meet those requirements. So there's a, you know, two pieces to that equation. I hope that answers the question, but you know, the, the main thrust of the basin plan obviously is to tackle those existing issues. Bring forth as much benefit as we possibly can.
Thank you.
I don't see any additional questions in council. Anyone else have any feedback? Nope. Does staff have what they need from council as far as direction on this item or?
We do. As we note, we'll, you know, finalize collecting feedback from, you know, the public and residents. And, you know, we'll address those comments if there's anything substantive. As we note, there may be some corrections incorporated into the plan. But barring that, we will be back on May 3rd and adopt the final through the consent agenda. So that's a moment to celebrate, I think. Appreciate it.
So Mayor, I would like to extend a token of appreciation to Toby and his team, Joel and Kristen. They've put a lot of time and energy since 2009, starting and stopping, as well as the community on this. So thank you to the team.
Indeed. I know these basin plans are very comprehensive, so thank you.
No, thank you all again for the consideration.
All right, our next item is a presentation on Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line and revision to the non-motorized concepts.
Oh, we'll have.
I did. So if we, if we have questions that we come up with along the way on, on the, with, with the last stuff, so should we put it to Toby or do you want it, Jeff?
I would send it to both of us so that we both get it. Whatever questions that the council has, we'll, we'll process those accordingly, but send it to both of us, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
As we are transitioning to the new item, Jed Ireland will be the main speaker. Myself and Audrey are available for Q and A on that as well. And Councilmember Lab, you're going to be very happy with the pictures that you see. I'm just going to tell you ahead of time, so.
Sounds good.
So Jed Ireland comes on board. He's our senior project manager. He's been assigned to this project because we are shorthanded in in our stormwater division and then we lost a CIP person. So holy moly, we're working through this. But Jed, the ball is in your court. Cue up your presentation, that would be great. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, it took a delay to be promoted as a panelist, but I'm here. Good evening, Mayor Mulcho and council. Let's see, I'm going to start with, I'm going to share my screen on this slide presentation.
We got Todd, thank you.
Sorry that took a moment. So this is the Lewis Thompson Tight Line Project, as Jeff explained. Last we talked about this was at the May 8th study session with council. And at that meeting, we were sharing these cross-sections related to potential non-motorized improvements that we wanted to share to the virtual open house. What we heard from the council at that time was, you know, please show some relative costs. Because we heard loud and clear that we want us, we want residents to know, as they're giving feedback, that there's, there's a difference between like to have and need to have. And there's, and there's budget considerations and we may not get everything. And so what we've done is we've modified the, the slides and the cross-sections to show you that we have incremental cross estimates for the various features. And starting with alternative one, this is stormwater improvements only. Of course, this is the, this is the basic project, a stormwater project to stop erosion and to improve quality for fish habitat. This was a prioritized project in the 2018 Zachuse Creek Basin Plan. And so the alternative one is the basic, just the pipe, essentially the tight line and flow control. And so this one is a range of 4 million to 4.5 million for construction. Alternative two adds sidewalk to that. Now, of course, this one's a little bit unique. Council asked to see this one. This was one of the, the slides that there was a little bit of debate about. And the idea is that this would be the minimum section to bring sidewalk in. We would actually be getting rid of the shoulder to build the sidewalk in this case. So the addition for this one, bikemen would, on the downhill, they would take a lane because they can drive, they can go a little bit faster, slower bicycles, children would probably be on the sidewalk. And so this one is an additional, this alternative adds $1.7 million. Alternative three would be adding rumble strips. We had some discussion about this idea that some vehicles would be crossing over on the uphill side, on the existing shoulder by the guard rail and just not respecting the, the fog line. This one would add rumble strips like you might see on state highways for centerline areas. And the advantage of a rumble strip is that it's cleanable. You can street sweep the entire width and so that it could be kept clean with street sweeping. Alternative four then would be adding a bike lane where we had deleted the shoulder for option two. This puts in a striped bike lane and 1.8 million for that option. This is cumulative, so the costs are going up. Alternative five would be then doing basically a half-street improvement because we'd be adding the planer strip in this case. So it's an additional 2.3 million for this one. So the range of costs that we have is approximately 4.5 million to 10 million for this project, the, the whole enchilada. Here's, here's a brief summary of our public outreach. If we get concurrence at this meeting, we're going to send out the mailers tomorrow to be printed and sent out. Those will probably hit doors in about a week. We'll be holding a virtual open house on May 5th. We'll also on Connect Simamish be having design alternative survey. And that'll close on May 11th. And then we're going to be summarizing the input and deliver that on May 13th so we can prepare the next report for. so we can prepare, uh, the next report for council with that feedback and information. This will be, we're looking at 10% at this information. We'll be looking for council's direction on which alternatives to take to a 30% detailed cost estimate. In addition to the mailer, we have other social media outreach. We're going to be reaching out to stakeholder groups such as schools, the HOA boards. And let's see, if I can give you an example of the project mailer, this is what we would plan to print tomorrow, which gives just a brief description and how to attend the meeting. And then people can also attend just virtually, they can just do the online survey. They don't even need to wait to attend the meeting. Once they get this, they can jump right into attending the survey if time is limited and this, then this is their shot. Here is an example of what the survey will be. It'll have asked respondents to give their ranking of the different features. And then, so that will give us a little bit of a qualitative spread on what they want for the features and what's the, what's the strength of their desire for those. Secondly, we'll be looking at the current, uh, which of the, uh, design alternative cross-sections do they approve? This is another way for us to get their feedback. And then we're asking for, uh, verbal description, some narrative of why they've selected that. And so I'll just leave the slide on there. Again, we're looking for concurrence that we've reached the, uh, the intent of what council directed us at last meeting so we can go forward with the mailer and keep to our schedule. And at that, we'll, I'll open it up for questions.
Great, thanks so much Jed. Uh, Councilmember Trinh.
Hey Jed, are you on the survey, you going to put price tags?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're going to distill the information that's on these slides and it'll be on the project page on Connect Samamish. And then.
Well, so like on these cards that you have shown in the picture right now, say question two, is that two different designs there? Yeah, alternative one, alternative two, and then there would be pricing as well placed. It said, hey, we're, it's going to cut, this one's 5 million, this one's 10, this one's seven, whatever. So that the, so that the resident has also that information to say, oh, well, if you're going to tax me to do this, which one would I do?
Um, so on, on the survey part, I think on this part, they were going to keep it simple. And so our consultant had recommended not having prices from what I'm seeing on this. But it would be in the narrative and the cross-sections explaining that lead up to the survey. But if it was important to put the cost in, I'm sure that that's something that we could do in, up to the next week leading up to the survey. And again, it'll be on the project regardless, showing the costs.
Yeah, I, I think that would be, I, I don't care which way you do it. As long as they, like, if I'm going to take the survey, I know there's, uh, these are the costs. Just seemed to me it'd be easier just to put them with the actual alternatives as I'm reading the questions. But the consultants, yeah, whatever, either way, I'm okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the layout and we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Hey, and then last, because I'm a, this, this is 10 million, okay, 10 million for the whole project? From top to bottom?
And the moment.
Is that also including the, the, the intersection improvements? I can't.
Uh, at the bottom, is what you're talking about? Yeah, it's adding that in as well. Given the relative cost estimating that we've been able to do to date in the timeframe that we've had, that's the order of magnitude that we're talking about right now. They could go up, uh, they, as we get into refinement, there might be some opportunities for value engineering at certain locations, but at this point in time, from a relative standpoint, our, our range is for the, the tight line project by itself, four and a half million to putting in the unbudgeted transportation improvements, which are non-motorized, which are very important to do, um, they could, uh, jump to price tag to as much as $10 million or more.
And then what we're, what we're saying is as we go through the process, those numbers most likely are going to go up once they get into more of the detail as to, do I have to move a wall or build a wall?
Yeah, you, you get into the nitty gritty. You get into the nitty gritty and all of a sudden your contingencies start to go up and up and up, right? Or, um, so they can, it just depends on the level of detail, once we get into that detail. That's why, as Jed mentioned, we want to figure out which alternative or alternatives that will advance to the next level, quote being 30%. At 30%, then you're kind of have a go, no-go, are you going to do the pedestrian improvements or not? Or, or are you going to bid him as an alternate or an additive? Because we really then need to find that additional revenue that's not been planned for the pedestrian improvements for this project. Because again, we got money generally for the tight line, but not, we did not get money for the pedestrian improvement. So that's at 30%.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
Sorry, one last, hey, I like it. Um, um, let's move forward. Good job.
She muted.
Yeah, Karen, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. So I think moving forward right away is really important. I think having prices on there is imperative. That was the biggest problem we had last time when we tried to roll out. Which one do you like? People picked which one they liked without having any idea of the cost. So, um, I, I really think that's imperative, uh, is they need to see the cost. So however that needs to be on there, I think it really has to be on there. And, um, I am one of those who I do not like the, um, you know, the, the, I'm totally happy with the turtle bumps because to put that solid barrier in there, from somebody who has been on that road numerous times on ice and everything else, those solid barriers are, would be really bad. So, um, anyway, that's just my thought on that one. I, I'm just really, really a stickler, um, on having those prices on there. But looks great. Good job.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thanks for the pictures, Jeff. Huge improvement. So the prices, from what I remember on the slides, they were additive, they didn't show the total. And I was like trying to do the math. Am I incorrect? Like, it would say like X million dollars more as opposed to the total price. I think that would be really helpful if, if it was just the total. I mean, you could do the additive, but again, just have the total instead, so people aren't doing the math. There was a comment, a public comment saying the rumble strips could be really noisy and to be mindful of that. Maybe that, is that going to be a question? I guess they don't have to choose that alternative, um, if they don't want the rumble strips.
Yeah, that would be, you know, their opinion of what they want to see or not see is the feedback that we're looking for. Whether we actually implement that, we will dive into that issue during the design phase of the project. But at this point in time, we're looking for feedback.
Who's getting the surveys? Is it, um, all residents or is it targeted and just in this area?
Jed?
We're, we're going to be mailing in the mailing zones just on the corridor. And so it'll be, it'll be residents.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess I have, um, a touch of feedback as well. I agree with Councilmember Liam that, um, adding in the total price, I think showing the additive of the additional amenities would be helpful, but then the total price for residents. I'm, I feel confident that everyone can do their math, but consider it, uh, in consideration for the fact that everyone is so busy, I think just making it as simple and easy and making it, uh, more likely that, uh, our residents will engage and do the survey. I think that would be helpful. I don't have any issue with the rumble strips. In fact, I find the rumble strips, because they're on the uphill side, I don't think those are going to get, um, rumbled all that often. And I think when we're talking about public safety, um, Zachuse is on the other side. So I think any provided barrier that we can give them to not go over, because I've actually seen a car go over and down into Zachuse before, um, is, uh, is a positive. I do have one question though, because my concern as a pedestrian who's gone up and down this roadway on several occasions, and I think I mentioned that a former council member, um, came in off the fog line and almost hit me, um, while I was walking on there, is it's the downhill that is the bigger concern for vehicles going over the fog line. And I couldn't tell on the graphic on the sidewalk that would be on the downhill side. Is it raised? It looked raised, but I'm trying to confirm that it's raised and it's not.
Yes.
Is there a curve there?
Yeah, yeah, this is the area right here. It's a, it's a raised, uh, side, uh, curve, raised curve right here.
Okay. So I think you've, at least from my vantage point, captured the essence of the, um, the options that we wanted to provide to the public so that they can kind of weigh in on those. So thank you, appreciate it. Councilmember Hal.
You know, I don't suppose you get enough respondents to do this, but I wondered if you could do a little A B testing? Because I understand why your consultant suggested not putting the prices on there because it really does help to get true intent without a price tag. But I wondered if there was like, you know, like a tiny percentage that went without the price tag so that you could get the true intent and the behavioralism behind, behind it. I would imagine that's why your consultant suggested not having the prices on there. But that's kind of a general question too. Do you ever do A B, A B testing for this stuff? Or do you worry too much about just not having the numbers to get statistically relevant information?
Um, excuse me, what do you mean by A B numbers or?
Oh, A B testing. So.
A B testing?
Yeah, A B testing. So I take just a slice. So if you're going to send it to 1,000 people, 100 people get a different survey. And, you know, in this, in, but in this case. And it, what it does is it gives you some verification on your data to a certain extent.
I think for, for, go ahead Jed, go ahead.
Oh, good, yeah, I just, uh, you know, on this one, we're probably not going to get a huge sample.
That's what I think too.
Of questions, right?
Yeah.
And we're, we're targeting residents.
Yeah.
In this particular area. And so I think, uh, the other, the other component that I would say, um, well, anyway, go, Jeff, go ahead, what was your response?
No, you're spot on. I was going to say the same. Small sample, a very narrow window of what we're looking for. Yeah, you know.
If you're looking for a pure response, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we were trying to be consistent with what the council, you know, wanted us to do, which was include the pricing information.
Yeah.
So that's really why we're here tonight, because that was a huge push.
No, I agree, I agree.
And so we want to be consistent with that.
Yeah. And to your other point, um, I would say that our, our consultants who's leading the outreach, they don't want to, they didn't want to include money. They don't typically do that. And we said, well, we are going to do that. We are, this is our, this is going to be our approach. And so I think just traditionally, there might be a reason where they really want, I, I guess traditionally they want residents to not be in that.
Mindset. It, it changes your answer. It changes the answer of what you want versus what you think you can afford. Because it is, it behaviorally, it pushes you into a different direction. So it, I, I'm in total agreement with the council of, yeah, oh, yeah, no, I want the prices on there. Because I think people, and it's a part of our education push so that people understand, think how much it costs and what is it worth to them personally? But I was also just trying to figure out if there was a way to do a slice to give you the pure data that sometimes is helpful for behavioral things. But it just, love the picture, the clouds are terrific. Think, you, thank you for the work.
We were missing an eagle and a bear. Next time we'll get those images, I'm just saying.
Jeff, did you just put your hand back up again? Sorry.
I, I did, I wanted to have a closing comment if we're done with council comments. I'm not sure if we're.
I think so. Go ahead.
So I think to pivot, um, we will work with our consultant on, to ensure that we have the cost estimating by total project. Uh, wherever we put it, we'll do it that way. And on the survey, it will, each alternative will have a dollar amount as the relative total as we understand it today. So we'll try to put those qualifiers in there. I think those are the two big takeaways that we have at the moment. We won't be doing A B testing this time around, um, but I'm fascinated by that. Would like to learn more about it and maybe incorporate that into some of our other projects down the road. So, uh, I think Jed, is there anything we're missing or that you're missing?
No, that's it. Thank, yeah, thanks for the summary. Got it.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate your, your work on that before it went out to residents. I think this will be, um, good. Okay, council, I think we have, uh, moved to council reports. I know that, um, Councilmember Lamb has a, a written report. And there was some feedback that we need to provide to Councilmember Lamb for the, um, PIC meeting that's coming up. So Councilmember Lamb will.
Yeah, I have a.
Go ahead.
I have a PIC meeting on Wednesday and I need approval for, um, three S C members to, um, move to the P S R C Executive Board. I sent, um, I sent an email regarding who those folks were. So if, if all is good, I, I will vote to approve those three.
I'm fine with the recommendation committee's suggestion.
Okay. And then there were two additional discussion topics. One is what, um, our cities doing locally, um, climate change. And then the second discussion topic is, um, affordable housing. And I reached out to, uh, staff specifically, um, David Pyle, the Director of Development. And he provided, um, a really comprehensive summary. So I will be going to the meeting, um, with, with those guy, with those guidelines, basically. So thank you for that, staff.
Yeah, I think if I can just chime in, I think, um, I, I read David's, um, message and I actually kind of tried to cut and paste it in here. I think as far as, um, the question, um, on going to multiple authorities for certification, I really appreciate what David Pyle had to say, um, in his message. So, um, I think it makes it more challenging. And I think if, I don't know if you plan on kind of saying what he said verbatim in there, but I thought he just made a lot of very salient points that would be, um, probably echoed by other jurisdictions as well.
I'll probably go into, in, in reading of, of most of it.
Perfect. Um, are there, are there council members that have reports? I think, um, Deputy Mayor Clark, you had something for EFER.
Yeah, I messed up and did not send it to Lita in time, an actual written report. So that was my fault. Yeah, just kind of looking for head nods as well. We'll have our first in-person, uh, for me at least, on Thursday, uh, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. And really it's for spending, um, some levy funds for mobile integrated healthcare staffing. So it's a, I kind of sent you guys the excerpt, just looking for a head nod on something like this. But basically spending levy funds on a staffing project for this program.
I have a quick question. Are there long-term implications for, because as far as using it for staffing? Will these be ongoing? Are there additional levy funds for main?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be additional levy funds. So like in the packet, I think they have, it's like next biennium or something, they'll be going after another levy. But, um, what this is, is a healthcare delivery model. So doing like emergency services and, um, reducing impact on hospitals and emergency rooms. So, um, I think a huge benefit in the end. But yes, I believe this will be an ongoing, my guess is increased staffing as well.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good with it too.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Does anyone else have a council report?
Mayor Mountow, my, my report is in the agenda package. I think if you read the three highlighted parts, uh, you got it covered and thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Acting City Manager, did you have a report at all?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything tonight specific.
Okay. And then finally, council, we have a closed session. This is review of professional negotiations, while in progress pursuant to R C W 42 dot 30 dot 144B. Let's see, we have 20 minutes down listed for, on here, is that sufficient? Is that sufficient time, council? Less, more?
20 sounds good.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting at 10:30.
Wait, I don't have a second. So why don't we go, because there, I think we should go into the closed session. And then when we come back out, if we're done, we can adjourn.
But we just need to extend, because I think it says adjourn at 10:00.
Okay, so then we needed a motion to extend that will.
Is that what you're doing?
If we extend the meeting beyond 10:30, we're still okay. We don't have to be in closed session that long.
Motion to extend to 10:15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. We've extended to 10:15. So we just need to be back out here in time to adjourn. Okay, I see three. We've got four, council. Okay, so I need a motion to extend. I, council, I would recommend we extend the meeting to 10:45.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of extending to.
I can hear you.
Aye.
Aye.
To 10:45, okay, aye. I'm hearing voices, somebody's saying, I can hear you. Okay.
I'll tell you in just a second.
Okay, I'm still hearing people. I think it's Carrie, but I'm not sure.
I think it was.
Okay, I don't know who voted what way. I don't even know which council members are on. I've got two council members on one screen, so. Are there five of us? Okay, by a vote of five, zero, we'll extend to 10:45. Council, I would suggest that we extend the closed session for till 10:30.
Okay.
I move that we extend the session till 10:30.
I don't think we have to have a motion. We just have to state that we're, the closed session will be till 10:30. So we can head back. And Scott, you can come on with us. Okay, council, I've got 10:30, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, or, well.
Carrie, you're waving.
We have. I believe that, I believe there was a motion.
Yep, I pull it back.
Sorry. Was there a second yet?
Nope. There was not.
Okay, I'm going to second the motion. We gotta, we can have discussion.
No, no motion's been put on the table or made yet.
No, I thought, no, I said I'd entertain a motion to adjourn and I heard someone.
I said, so moved. Yep.
I thought the motion to adjourn was withdrawn because we were going to entertain.
Okay, okay, thank you for, okay. Now Deputy Mayor Clark.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's when we had the transition in the back there. So because, so basically I'm moving to extend Acting City Manager Scott McColl's acting pay and whatever it's called for at least another week. Since I did it two weeks ago, it's now the two week. Oh, I have something else to add to that. And also putting RFP on next week's agenda. So to marry up with that week timeline.
Second. Okay, councilors, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six, zero, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.